Special meeting. Good evening. I'd like to let you know we have two meetings scheduled for tonight. The first is a City of Urbana City Council special meeting, and that'll be followed immediately by the regular committee of the whole meeting. So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the special meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin? Here. And we do expect Chandra Bishop to attend via phone. Um, next item is, uh, there are no minutes. Next item is additions to the agenda, and I would ask for a motion to switch the order and put item H ahead of item G. That would be the mayoral appointment going before the resolution authorizing the execution of the Chief of Police employment agreement.
I'll move that we make that switch on the agenda.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next up is presentations and public input. We have no presentation scheduled, so if anyone wishes to address the special meeting of the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council input and communications. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I want to invite the public, uh, this Thursday, June 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at 25 o'clock Brewery. Uh, that's on, it's 208 West Greig Street. We're gonna, um, do a budget exercise, and the public is invited to help prioritize the city's future spending. That's June 8th, Thursday, at 6:00 PM at, uh, 25 o'clock Brewery.
Anyone else? All right, move on to reports of officers. Uh, there are none. We'll move on to unfinished business. The first item is ordinance number 2023-05-016, which is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate at 131 and 205 North Race Street in Urbana.
Thank you. Um, we had brought this, um, proposed acquisition to council at the Committee of the Whole on May 22nd, and you approved the, um, you approved the ordinance, and I just, uh, the school district requested a small change. The purchase price is the same, $113,000 for their property on Race Street, but they asked, in light of the favorable purchase price, if the city would agree to pay for what are traditionally seller borne costs, which are for title insurance and the closing costs. And, um, we've estimated that those will not exceed $3,000, so I'm recommending that we make that change. You had a redlined version of the contract in the packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carol? Is there a motion?
Move approval of ordinance number 2023-05-016, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate at 131 and 205 North Race Street.
Second.
Second.
I'll give James the second this time. Is that okay?
Okay.
Spread them, spread it around. Uh, any further discussion? Grace?
Sorry, I thought of a question. I wasn't fast enough on the draw. Um, if I could just clarify, that this is for purchase only with no intended future use of the site. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, if, if we get to the point where we think the best course of action is to bring a request for proposals forward, we'll, we'll bring that to the council for your input.
Any other comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is mayoral appointments. This would be for Chief of Police, Chief Larry Boone, for a period from June 5th, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. I'd like to welcome Famy Fletcher, Human Resources Manager, and Chief Boone. Welcome. It's good to see you again. I am pleased to submit the following appointment for your approval. This is for Larry Boone as Chief of Police, effective June 5th, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. Chief Larry Boone is a 33-year law enforcement professional who retired as Chief of Police for the Norfolk, Virginia Police Department in 2022. He has experience in many operational and administrative positions in Norfolk, including patrol officer, special enforcement division, metro tack officer, K-9 officer, internal affairs, detective, Homeland Security Division, corporal, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and deputy chief. During his time at NPD, he was named Officer of the Year and nominated a second year, and won a Medal of Valor from the Virginia Police Work Dog Association. He was also awarded a distinguished service medal, received 34 commendation letters and awards, and was an FBI National Academy graduate. Additionally, Mr. Boone was recognized nationally in 2020 for building trust through community programs by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and subsequently recognized nationally and internationally for managing civil unrest in Norfolk following the killing of George Floyd. Mr. Boone holds a Bachelor of Arts in Graphic Design from Georgia Southern University and a Master of Public Administration from Old Dominion University. He served as the police chief for the last six years of his tenure at Norfolk. I believe, Famy, you had comments and information to provide.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, give a brief summary again of the process.
Make sure your mic's on.
It is, but I'll get it closer to, closer to me. Um, just a brief summary of the process, uh, by which we have arrived here today. Um, as you all know, the former Chief of Police, Brian Seraphin, retired in April of 2022. The city then contracted with PolyHire, an executive search firm, to conduct a national search, which had been ongoing now for a little over a year. Um, the position was posted in the fall of 2022. During that time, um, PolyHire sourced, vetted, referred candidates. The city also underwent, um, undertook some community, uh, engagement efforts. Excuse me, um, PolyHire posted an online survey to gather community feedback, um, to ascertain the, the characteristics and experience and qualities that the community would like to see in their next Chief of Police. In February and January of 2023, uh, city staff, including myself, Mayor Marlin, um, City Administrator Mitten, and interim Chief Rich Searls, did interview a slate of candidates referred to us by PolyHire as the top candidates that were, um, that were sourced during that recruitment, and it became very evident very quickly that Mr. Boone was, uh, far and away the, the most qualified candidate and would be the best fit for the City of Urbana. So we're pleased to, uh, have him here tonight, and I just want to give him a chance to say a few words.
Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, I am truly humbled to have this opportunity to join the Urbana family. I believe very deeply inside of me the, um, obstacles that you face with respect to community relations I face often in the City of Norfolk. My pedigree and my background says that I've been able to connect authentically police, community, city government, so that we all work as one, moving in the right direction. I will only guarantee you this, that the department you see today will be different going forward. There are some incredible women and men. I've met quite a few. Um, and one of the things that strike me is that when I am having these conversations, not just with the officers, but with yourself, Madam Mayor, your quiet strength, I see that and I recognize that. And I see the same in the folks that report to you, to include our women and men of the Urbana Police Department. With that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move, I'd like to move, uh, for, uh, approval of the appointment of Chief of Police Larry Boone from June 5th to Ju-, uh, June 5th, 2023 to June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
By Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I speak, these comments are just my personal opinions. They do not reflect any other city council member or the City of Urbana government. They are strictly my personal opinions. I had the opportunity to attend the two town halls on May 4th at the Vineyard Church. I have to say that I completely agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "The majority of policemen are good people, and that's a fact," end quote. That has certainly been my experience. I also agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "We get it right far more than we get it wrong." That is true. I agree with Chief Boone, who said at the town hall, quote, "I believe at the end of the day, when it comes to discipline of officers, that recommendation should be with the Chief of Police," end quote. Yep, I agree on that, too. I'm totally on board with Chief Boone's comment, quote, "I love data. I don't hide it," end quote. And, quote, "I'm a data guy. I capture everything," end quote. We're definitely on the same page there. I agree with Chief Boone when he said Urbana doesn't need a military tank. I also agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "We have to be intentional. We have to have hard conversations. We have to give praise when praise is due. We have to hold folks accountable when that's due," end quote. And Chief Boone said, quote, "I'm going to challenge the community. I'm going to challenge city council. I'm going to challenge folks to recognize these officers when they do good things," end quote. To that end, I hope we can have commendation and promotion ceremonies during city council meetings on the television, like the Urbana Fire Department has been doing. Chief Boone is right. We need to give our police officers the credit and the encouragement when it's deserved. I completely agree with Chief Boone when he said, quote, "The way we get over this issue surrounding trust, we have to be extremely transparent," end quote. And Chief Boone said at the town hall, quote, "Being intentional from law enforcement is going to require you to sometimes to be vulnerable. That's okay. That's okay, and that's fine. That's how we grow together," end quote. With that in mind, I disagree with Chief Boone's comment at the town hall where he said, quote, "I understand police get a raw deal, particularly the last two or three years," end quote. Nope, not true, in my opinion. The real deal the police have gotten since George Floyd are hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, lateral transfer bonuses, and a wage increase every single year since 2020, and will get an every-year wage increase until 2026. Since George Floyd, this city council has allocated over $30 million to just law enforcement. Gregory Brown got a raw deal. Kiwan Carrington got a raw deal. Trayvon Martin got a raw deal. Tamir Rice got a raw deal. Eric Garner got a raw deal. Philando Castillo got a raw deal. Toya Fraser got a raw deal. Richie Turner got a raw deal. Officer Chris Oberheim got a raw deal, and Tyree Nichols got a raw deal, to name just a few. The 18,000 police departments across the nation, including this one, are doing just fine since George Floyd. This playing of the victim card some police representatives use to silence legitimate criticism is behavior unbecoming of an officer, a gentleman, and a lady who claim to be heroes. Heroes with good intent don't mind oversight, transparency, and accountability. What the public has demanded since George Floyd is some accountability and change in police conduct. Chief Boone, you yourself said in your cover letter to your resume, quote, "The unfortunate incident surrounding George Floyd has placed the law enforcement profession on notice that the community will no longer accept police practices and behaviors of the past," end quote, which I completely agree with. The public has rightly criticized the system of policing. In fact, had it been left to this system, George Floyd would have just, would have been just another statistic, and no one would have ever heard of George Floyd. For shortly after George Floyd was killed, the Minneapolis Police Department spokesman, John Elder, told the press and the public that George Floyd died of medical complications while resisting arrest, just like six years earlier in Chicago when police representatives told the television stations that Laquan McDonald lunged at police with a knife before Officer Jason Van Dyke opened fire 16 times, which is why I so completely agree with Chief Boone when he said at the town hall, quote, "Once you lie or steal, you have tarnished the badge," end quote. And Chief Boone said, quote, "There's mistakes of the heart. Stealing, lying, things of that nature. You have to be terminated. You have to be separated from this environment," end quote, which I completely agree with Chief Boone there, too. I also disagree with Chief Boone's characterization that SWAT teams and narcotic, narcotics enforcement are, quote, "A great time," end quote, and somehow, quote, "Sexy," end quote. This is the exact police culture and police cowboy mentality we are trying to eradicate. Chief Boone knows darn well that if his house was suddenly breached by numerous police officers dressed in tactical gear pointing rifles at Chief Boone and his family, the last thing he would ever think is this is all very sexy and a great time. And out of respect for the 3,500 prison inmates who are currently living in an Illinois state prison stripped apart from their families and lives on a drug conviction, the utter failure and devastation that is the 40-year drug war is hardly what can be called a great time or sexy. I believe the love for people in Chief Boone's heart can overcome these millisecond mental mistakes set on a stage during a pop quiz in front of an audience. Had I been up there on May 4th, I would have been making mistakes left and right. Some might say I'm making mistakes right now. But the seriousness of uses of force and the catastrophic drug war failure cannot let me overlook, overlook what Chief Boone called sexy and a great time. I hope the Chief can understand. Everything Chief Boone says will be used in the court of public opinion to encourage the chief and support the chief to do the right thing. For in the end, as the chief already well knows, it's not about you, chief, and it certainly isn't about me. It's about them." Point to the audience. If you look at the City of Urbana's organizational chart, you'll see who is at the top, who is the real boss. It's the taxpayers, the citizens of Urbana who pay for the salaries, the buildings, and supplies for this entire government. I welcome you and invite you, Chief Boone, to come help us serve these people. If you stick around, I believe you will find the citizens of Urbana are well worth it, in my opinion. Thanks for letting me speak.
Further comments? James?
Uh, thank you. I'll say a, a second for some of Chris's statements. Thank you for, uh, laying things out. Um, and thank you to, uh, Larry Boone for your interest in serving in Urbana. And I had a question. This is a question time?
One question.
My one question is if you could please clarify, um, your opinion on increasing transparency and public oversight within the department?
If I understand you correctly, are you referring to the CRB, and how would I embrace that process?
Um, just in general, theoretically, kind of for or against increasing transparency and public oversight of the department?
Well, I can give you some examples when transparency is necessary and immediate. Officer-involved shootings, um, excessive force situations that catch, um, the attention of myself or my staff. Um, those transparency issues only go to increasing, um, the trust of your force. I, I don't hide anything. The gentleman here mentioned being vulnerable. Sometimes, when you are the tip of the spear, the only way to navigate, to offset, uh, tension is through transparency. And I want to cement this. I come from a city of 250,000 in which protests occurred every day. And during that time, because of my transparency and processes and terms in how I reacted to things when officers didn't always do the best thing, that city saw no rioting, no looting, no arrest, because I had built that social capital. So when you speak about transparency and what that looks like in a broad scope, it's being authentic about how you go about your business and how you deal, uh, with the community immediately, uh, when something of concern surfaces. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
We'll move on to James, and then call for a vote.
All right. First of all, I wanted to say, uh, thank you, Chief Boone, for, um, putting your hat in the ring. Um, I do want to say that, um, as a council member, it's always important to have a good process when we're looking for appointment like this. I, I have felt that during this process, um, that I was fully engaged, that I had the information that I needed as it went forward, and appreciated the opportunity that was made throughout that process, uh, to have time to talk to Chief Boone, um, and to observe the opportunities that were made to the public to have that kind of engagement. I did, a couple of weeks ago, have the opportunity to speak to four of our officers at the farmer's market, and took that opportunity to ask them, unfortunately, two of them were reanu, which is good news. They had just been sworn in, so they didn't have an experience. But two of them who had been on the force, um, when I said, "Did you have a chance to engage in the process as we were looking for a police chief?" They both told me that yes, and that they felt they were engaged, and that they had a voice in, in the process. And I, and that was important to me as well. The public, the council, the staff are all part of this going forward. So I want to, I want to thank, um, our Human Resources team for, for running the process and for how it's been done, and I look forward to voting shortly.
Mary Alice?
I, I don't have anything formally prepared. Um, I will say that this has been a very interesting process. Uh, the staff have been fabulous, open, and, um, been providing us information as we go through this process. Uh, Chief Boone, you've been here, I think, twice now, and you've sat through hours upon hours of discussions with many different people, so I thank you for your time in this process. I will say, from a personal perspective, that I am, um, energized. We have a public safety review going on. The next step after that, of course, is to have the right people in place for us to be able to move it forward. Um, so I, I certainly think that Chief Boone joining the force and, and leading the force through that process is a very positive step. So thank you very much, and I do approve, I do plan on voting for this.
Hello? Can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead, Chandra.
Okay, I was just making sure you could hear me. Um, hello. Um, I just want to say that, um, I'm excited to, um, to have Chief Boone on our, our Urbana staff. I'm looking forward to everything he can bring and the experiences that he brings with him in his, um, long career in law enforcement. Um, I think it's, will inject new energy into the police department as well as the city. I'm looking forward to all the things that, um, he will bring with his, his experience, including, you know, community relationship building, um, as well as, um, different ideas that will, um, create a better and safer Urbana. So, um, I will be supporting this appointment.
Thank you. All right, I'm going, Jale.
All right, I think everybody wants to say, I mean, it has been a really important process. I think it's worth making sure that people understand that council absolutely was part of this. Again, major credit to the city staff. I, I think this is an important more moment for the City of Urbana, where a city that talks about, you know, wanting to see change, being progressive, and I, I think we found the candidate to do that. I, I fully expect that you will challenge us, and that there are going to be moments where we challenge you, but that's the democratic process, right, is making sure that we're representing the residents that we are here to speak for and, and in support of. Um, and then also making sure that we are at the cutting edge of what safety can mean, right, that that can mean a lot of different things. So, um, it's going to be a, it's going to be a new day. It's going to be a change, but I'm, I'm appreciative of the process, and I'm, I'm very hopeful for the, the future of our city. So, thank you.
Sharice?
I'm just still excited that you're here. Um, after talking to you and, and having conversation with you about the different experiences, yet also common experiences that we seem to have had, um, I really looked forward and hoped that you would, um, fit in, and you- you would fit in and you have with the city of Urbana, with our family. And I'm really hoping as well that as the years, because I expect you to be here for years, as the years go by, that more and more of our Urbana communities will also embrace you and embrace you as part of the community. I don't, I don't like adversarial, I don't like to have to be adversarial. And I look forward to working with you in the future. I look forward to us being able to have some plain talk, like I said before, as I have with every chief that I've come across, starting with Chief, you know, with Bryant and with Richard, and I hope to have that same kind of back and forth with you as well. So, welcome.
And before we vote, I would like to thank the HR department, especially Famy Fletcher, for leading this, coordinating this effort on our end. I also wanted to express my thanks to interim chief Rich Searls, who, it's not an interim chief, he has been the chief the past year, and I appreciate everything he has done and the work, the extraordinary amount of work put in by the men and women of the Urbana Police Department. So, thank you. So I would now ask for a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And officially welcome to Urbana. We've been saying that for the past three months, but this time, you got to stay. Okay, part two. And that is resolution authorizing the execution of a chief of police employment agreement and authorizing staff to implement the agreement. Elizabeth Hannan and Famy Fletcher.
So I'll start this off. As you know, we now have a very highly qualified police chief, and we're excited about that. He's very well qualified, he has considerable experience. In addition to that, the current market for filling these types of positions is extremely competitive. We were very fortunate to be able to attract Mr. Boone. He was much sought after, even by much larger cities, and for us to be competitive against other potential employers, we had to sharpen our pencils. The resolution that we're asking you to approve, again, we give the mayor the authority to execute the employment agreement, which has already been signed by Mr. Boone. In addition, it would give me the authority to implement certain aspects of the agreement, including the defined contribution retirement plan. So Famy's going to review just a couple of highlights of the agreement.
So you all have seen this, but I'll just, I'll just touch on the major points. This agreement is, defines the scope and the term and conditions of Mr. Boone's employment while he is employed with the city of Urbana. It includes a compensation package that includes an gross annual salary of $205,000. Also, the city's executive management benefits package, which is afforded to all members of city management. It also includes the defined eligibility for the defined contribution plan that Elizabeth spoke of just a few minutes ago, which would allow vesting after, full vesting after four years of service. Other items include an annual uniform allowance, take-home car, which are also customary for this position. It also includes up to $20,000 of reimbursement for relocation expenses. Mr. Boone has expressed genuine interest in residing here in the city of Urbana. We do understand that we can't guarantee the housing market or housing availability, but if he is able to relocate within the Urbana city limits within the six months that he has to relocate, he will receive a $10,000 signing bonus. There are some other points in the agreement, notwithstanding the reappointment process and the biennial appointment process. There is a severance package included if Mr. Boone separates under the terms of this contract of 20 weeks of severance, which is what we're allowed to offer in the state of Illinois.
Technical questions? Chris?
So is Chief Boone the highest-paid city employee and the highest-paid city employee in city history?
I didn't quite hear the end of the second part of your question, I apologize.
Is he the highest-paid employee in the history of the city of Urbana?
I don't have that information available. I would imagine probably yes, and he will be the highest-paid employee that we have.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Got a motion?
I had a question.
Okay.
There's one I didn't have a chance to see and talk with you about beforehand, which was in the separation about the employee having the right to declare amendments to changes in, substantial changes to the form of government relating to their roles. I was curious if that's a standard thing, if that's been in previous positions. I can't find the employment agreements for our previous police chiefs.
So that's, it's commonly included in governmental employment agreements. For example, if this government were to change, if this city were to change its form of government, that would, that is the language that would trigger the employee being able to make amendments, if that makes sense.
So do you know if this was included in previous ones? Understandable if you don't know off the top of your head, but if that's standard that we have for other city positions?
I don't believe that any of our previous police chiefs had an employment agreement.
Was there any other employment contract? Is that different from an agreement? I imagine they had something that they were operating under.
No, I don't believe they did.
No, they did not.
So we can't compare because that, there's no point of comparison.
Very interesting. May I ask why that was?
I don't think that we could really say why that was. Nobody asked for it, nobody demanded it. That's not a standard thing that we do here at the city of Urbana. This particular candidate felt that it was important and that was part of the, as part of the negotiation, he wanted to have an employment agreement.
Yeah, it seems pretty standard in my experiences, so thank you.
Mary Alice.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I will move approval of resolution number 2023-06071R, a resolution authorizing the execution of a chief of police employment agreement and authorizing staff to implement the agreement.
Second.
By Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Discussion.
Grace.
Thank you. I will also echo thank you to the staff for the information throughout this process. I am generally in support. I'm in support of having employment contracts in general. I guess I'll start off with that one. And generally in support of this, I do think personally that it's a lot of money, more money than I'd know what to do with living in Champaign-Urbana, and I also understand some of the reasonings for needing to be competitive. I hope that Chief Boone is able to locate within Urbana, and I do have some concerns about this language in the contract that I was previously questioning. While I do understand, you know, any major changes to their duties being, you know, an issue, I hope that it doesn't limit us as far as the changes that we've talked about wanting to do together, that there may be some changes for good that we agree on, and I guess I'll have to hope that that is the case, but I will just express some concerns that the way this is written, you know, if we wanted to restructure some things, then that gives him cause to consider his contract terminated under employee choice, it looks like. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Chandra, are you there? That motion passes. Thank you. And with no further business before this special meeting, we are adjourned.
Okay, let's get on with the committee of the whole meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and before we do this, I just want to make a observation that it appears that we have the same minutes that we had at the last committee of the hall, which was Chris's meeting, only we had, we had it on the agenda, but we didn't have the minutes. So this time, we have it on the agenda and we have the minutes. The other correction, oh, let me just make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do you like to, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? Grace.
Thank you. And I'm sorry I can't verify offhand, I'm trying to look through my calendar, but I don't have all my calendars on me, because these minutes say that I was both absent and chair, and I'm trying to recall.
Yeah.
I believe I was there. I mean, obviously, if I chaired it, I don't think I was gone. I did miss some meeting in April when I was sick, but I'm trying to figure out the date, so I didn't know if we could check and clarify that.
Yes, I've already talked to the city clerk, and she is going to, she's going to, and I was going to make that, that same observation, as well as the fact that I was also present but didn't vote. So, so having only just been able to talk to Ms. Clark about that today, she's going to look into that and make any corrections that need to be made. So I guess what I would like to do is make a motion for the minutes as they are, when they are corrected and amended for approval. Can I do that? Do I do that now? Is that point of order? Oh, okay, I can't do that.
I will correct my motion that, or amend my motion to state that it is, I move approval for the corrected minutes based on the presence or absence of different council members.
Thank you, yes.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll still, second. I'm good with the change.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Are there any agendas, any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Now's the time for presentations and public input. I think I'm going to start with public input and then go to presentations, because we have several presentations tonight. Would anyone like to come and speak to the committee of the whole, public input? And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, council people, men, women. I'm Minnie Pearson, and I'm the president of the NAACP Champaign County branch, and I have been involved in a great deal of the process, not all of the process, of choosing the chief. I am very, very pleased. I understand people being cautious. I understand you, you know, you have questions, as you should, but I think that Urbana, right now, Urbana, it's time for this to happen. And you are just the council people to see that it is happening. And I know that under your leadership, he will do a wonderful job, Chief Boone. So thank you so much for the work that you put in. Thank you so much for drawing it out, because people were asking me, did they make a decision? No, they didn't. Did they make a decision? So you finally made a decision, and we are pleased. So congratulations to you and chief. And also, it would go without saying that our interim chief, Searls, did a fantastic, I mean, an absolutely fantastic job, and we are going to miss him tremendously. He has all of the workings of a true chief himself. So thank you all so very much for the work that you put in, and hopefully, well, no, things will go very well for Urbana, I'm sure of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Is there anyone else? Okay, moving on. Presentations. Our first presentation is budget introduction, and that will be Elizabeth Hannan and Ally.
Actually, I'm the fourth actor here.
Oh, and Mayor Marlin.
Not actor, I should say staff, person. I'm going to kick off this budget presentation for the fiscal year 2024 budget. Next slide, please. I wanted to start by acknowledging that this is, for several years now, the city has been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We've included that at the, at the front of each of the budget books for the last few years, never having really explained what it takes to get this award. So there's many criteria that the finance department and we all have to meet in order to get this recognition. The budget has to be formatted in a way that's understood by the average reader, and it's more than just a presentation of our revenues and expenses. The budget book, as we have it today, and it's very different from what it used to be, it's an educational tool as well. It helps people understand where our revenue comes from, how we're spending taxpayer dollars, how it reflects our policies, our goals, and our priorities, and how it ties to local issues. And a really good budget does all that and more, and ours meets the criteria, and therefore we, again, we're honored with this award. So I want to take this opportunity to thank Elizabeth Hannan, our HR Finance Director, City Administrator Carol Mitten, our Financial Analyst Aliana Robinson, otherwise known as Ally. Also assisting with the preparation of this budget and in review was Fire Lieutenant Steve Doggett, Senior Management Analyst Will, Analyst Will Kolchowski, plus every single department head, administrative support personnel, and many other staff had a hand in developing the budget. This process begins every year right after the first of the year. So it's a six-month process to get us to this point, gathering the information we need, making the forecasts, and this, this, every year, I'm always very proud of the document that we present to the public, and I'm, that's no different tonight. Okay. So, just as an overview, couple of the main things to focus on about this budget, which is similar in previous years. Number one, it helps us maintain, it reflects our efforts to maintain the long-term fiscal health and stability of the city. First few years in office, we spent a great deal of time and effort to address our structural deficit, restore the health of our fund balance, restore our pension funding, to develop asset management plans that help us plan for the future. All of these efforts in the early years helped us build the foundation that we are now building on today as we move forward with programs and services. This year's budget is- This year's budget is highly influenced by the allocation of the remaining ARPA funds. We had about $10 million to allocate in our American Rescue Plan funds, and that, you'll see that throughout this budget. And we continue to use our resources carefully so that we can maintain and improve city services. The visible signs of this are what you see in the programs and services that the city provides. But I also wanted to take this minute to share with you how a lot has gone on behind the scenes to really help rebuild and improve our internal government infrastructure that you don't see. You know, it's not a pothole that's being filled or a project that's being built, but we're really strengthening our own internal infrastructure. In the past years, we've, you know, there's many, many examples, but just a few of the things that are underway today help improve our efficiency. They improve, we've improved transparency and accessibility. We've improved the user experience when they interact with our programs and services, and it's a bit, we hope, hopefully, it's more convenient for the users, and we think it's also helped improve our workplace environment, making it more people, giving people the tools to do their jobs more effectively. Couple of the things that are underway now. Number one, new website should be unveiled. The goal is to have it fall of 2023. That's been a long time coming. I think it'll greatly improve our ability to serve the public and actually ourselves. We've updated or implemented a number of new online services. The latest is a procurement portal in Public Works, which is called OpenGov, and that will now be the portal for both solicitations for various bids and submit a lot of bids. And that's going to streamline the entire process and actually make that clearer, more transparent to the users. We've made great progress in filling staff vacancies compared to where we were last year. And once, once we're through the budget season and people have had a time, a chance to recover, we'll, I'd like to present an overview of just where, and HR department has moved, that's the other big thing. We'll give you an update on where we are with that. We're enhancing the capacity of the HR department. This will improve, allow us to keep up in the future with hiring, with employee recruitment and retention, with employee support and professional development. And one of the things that's going on, it's a very public process, but it also is part of our internal infrastructure, and that's our rewriting of the comprehensive plan, which was last published in full 20, almost 20 years ago. This is a huge effort taking place over several years, but it's presents vision of the community for the future, foundation for the land use regulation throughout the city, and will help guide our growth and development. Next slide. The budget reflects the mayor and council strategic priorities that were set and adopted in early 2022 and are currently being implemented, and those, again, are public safety and well-being. These are the very broad areas that the council identified. Housing quality and affordability, investment in public infrastructure, and economic recovery, particularly from COVID-19, and future growth and development. And in every budget document, you'll see reflected both the challenges and the opportunities that the community faces. And our challenges are, present opportunities, depends on how we manage to address them. We have to continue to grow and diversify our tax base, and the budget does a very good job of explaining various sources of revenue for the city. People tend to focus on property taxes, particularly this time of the year, because that's one of the most painful checks people write to their government. But I want to always take this opportunity to explain to the public that the property taxes that you pay to the, when you write your check to the county, do not fund much of our basic city services. In fact, only about three cents for every dollar that an Urbana taxpayer pays in property taxes goes to the general operating fund for basic facility, for city services. The property taxes are paid to many other taxing bodies in the city. What we depend on for our general day-to-day operations are things like sales taxes, state and local sales taxes, our share of the state income taxes. And that is a, the revenue that we receive from those sources is directly dependent on our diversified tax base. We have to continue to maintain our long-term fiscal health and stability, and we have financial policies now in place where our recurring revenues always should remain slightly above our recurring expenses, so we do not ever again find ourselves in the case of a structural budget deficit that we had to dig ourselves out from several years ago. And we continue to address community needs as reflected by the priorities set by city council, and the budget explains how your dollars are spent. Among the opportunities we have is the once-in-our-lifetime input of federal dollars in the form of the American Rescue Plan Act. And those projects that were selected, 25 projects, spending about $10 million, did an excellent job of leveraging, leveraging those dollars, collaborating with other community organizations and government entities to really invest in some transformative projects. Our focus on development is going to be focused on those that grow and diversify our tax base. We have a very successful program, it's still ongoing, the Think Urbana program through our enterprise zone that has, to date, supported the construction or permitting for 335 single-family and duplex homes and 36 commercial projects, which include multifamily, and that's since 2015. We are focusing on development in downtown Urbana, the Hotel Royer. We're welcoming, soon will welcome H Mart to our downtown. We'll be issuing requests for proposals for redevelopment of several sites in our downtown. Another opportunity is to capture the uncounted population that resulted from the 2020 census, and we have requested an estimate for a partial special census. So while we have challenges, we also have many opportunities, and this budget is a reflection of both. So I'd like to, all of these efforts that we're making will help us maintain financial health and stability, and that's important because that allows us to serve our residents, businesses, and visitors. So I'll turn this over to Elizabeth.
Yeah, so just, just real quick, quickly, a little information on our financial outlook. So we have seen, even since we did the financial forecast back in January, some pretty good growth in some of our revenue sources better than we had expected, and that's very encouraging. As always, we're thankful for the University of Illinois, which is our largest employer and brings a great deal of stability to the community. They also publish a flash index, which is an indicator of the state of the economy in Illinois, and that index was just updated for May. It's at 103.2. So anything over 100 indicates that the state's economy is growing, so that's positive. It has been higher, certainly. Our most recent high was over 106 in March of 2022, but, but still, the Illinois economy is growing. Inflation is moderating, but still relatively high at 4.9%. That's higher than what we expect the long-term average to be. We expect the long-term average to be closer to 2.5%. Unemployment in the metro area is at 3.6%, which is down considerably from, from the pandemic. The hiring environment continues to be very competitive, and that's, that's something that we take into account in many ways. We do think, and you've probably seen this in the news, there's still a risk that there's a recession in the offing here that could slow retail sales growth particularly, and we could see some of our revenues not quite meet expectations, but some of that is built into the budget already. So we're prepared. As the mayor mentioned, we have sound financial policies, we have a healthy fund balance, so we're in a good place if that does occur. It's, it's not gonna, it's certainly not going to be catastrophic. It's something that we can weather. So with that, oh, sorry, one more thing I did want to mention. In the state's budget, something, something good happened in the state's budget that is not actually reflected in the budget book that you have in front of us, and that is that they increase the allocation of income tax revenue to local governments. I think we had talked about this earlier at one point. Now, we didn't get back to the whole 10% that was historically what was allocated to local governments. It's a, it's a fairly small increase, but we think the impact for us is going to be about $250,000 annually, so it's certainly nothing to complain about, and hopefully, through little incremental bits of progress, we'll get to a bigger number eventually. So again, that's not in the proposed budget, that's just a little bit of good news that I wanted to share. So I'm going to give it to Carol a little bit to talk about some of the key points of the budget.
Thank you. The takeaways are really what the mayor highlighted in her overview, and there's a high degree of continuity now, and I think the mayor council's strategic goals give us that, and then the ARPA concept plan just expanded on that. So as we move from one year to the next, there's a high degree of consistency because of those mayor council priorities, and then as we implement ARPA, those also just kind of roll into that. And then maintaining the services that are responsible to the community's needs, that's, that's about delivering the services, but it's also about, as the mayor mentioned, just building the infrastructure of government to allow the frontline workers to be able to function. So I'm going to go through the budget highlights in, in the categories that are the strategic areas out of the mayor council's strategic goals. So under public safety and well-being, we continue to implement the Barry Dunn study. This is, there's an action step in the mayor council goals to conduct a public safety review, and then another action step is to actually implement it, so we're in that, in the review stage. It's, you know, we're just so thrilled with the quality of the, of the team that Barry Dunn has put together, and they're challenging us to get a lot of information together, so I think it's going to be really useful once we get to the outputs there. For, there's some additional training that is proposed to be allocated to the police department. It's $50,000, and that is for mandatory training under the Safety Act. Most of that is for training itself, but some of that is for the overtime that is required to be incurred in order to deliver the training. And then I just wanted to highlight some of the ARPA funding that, that will be implemented in the coming years that relates to public safety and well-being. So the, when the council did the allocations, and they were grouped by what are the, what are the projects going to be touching in terms of the goals in the concept plan, $3.5 million of the allocations that you all made were to address root causes of, root causes of community violence, and that was a very specific mayor council action step. And then $2.3 million will increase the availability and affordability of mental health services. So moving now to housing, the highlights under that are, there's ARPA funding, there's a lot of ARPA funding that was allocated for housing, $4.1 million. There was a mayor council goal, or action step that was very specifically targeted to reducing homelessness and coordinating with community partners. There's two projects in particular that were funded through ARPA that addressed that. One is the single-room occupancy that's proposed on Lincoln Avenue, and it's a partnership with the city and the housing authority and RPC. And then the Hope Village, the tiny homes, that is a partnership with Carl Hospital and the university and the Champagne County healthcare consumers. And then the mayor mentioned the EZ incentives that have, that have contributed to building over 300 new residential dwellings in Urbana, and the totality of what has been funded so far with the EZ incentives since 2015, as projected, once all the incentives burn off, it will add $43 million to our tax base, which is probably the biggest single boost that our tax base has gotten in that span of time. Under infrastructure, we are proposing to fund a special projects manager, and as we, you know, we have our facilities master plan, and we, and we're increasing the grant funding that we're going after, and we have big transportation projects, and if, and the way we've been operating up to this point is that it's always been another staff member in, in Public Works, whether it's the operation, Deputy Director for Operations on one project, along with the facilities folks helping, or an engineering, an engineer, they've been peeled off of their normal work to oversee projects. And so we're proposing to add a special projects manager. We have somebody doing that on a part-time basis right now, and we really could use the help, and then they would be dedicated to helping deliver the projects. And with that kind of focus, that'll make sure we get best value for our, for our dollars. And then for the capital improvement plan, you heard a presentation on that a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. You know, we, we, in response to mayor council goals, we have incorporated an equity lens just as it relates to street projects so far this year. That's described in the transportation section of the CIP about how we did that for projects that are, that are also being wrecked and stacked according to other criteria, like, you know, street condition and so forth. But we also continue to have the equity and quality of life projects, which put the equity piece first and other issues behind that, and we'll be doing a lot of implementation of that in the next year, and then in the CIP, we've added some additional dollars for that. And then just can't, I just can't help highlighting the funding gap that continues to persist and is described in the, in the capital improvement plan, but as projected right now, we have, at least for infrastructure, over $8 million over the next five years that we are underfunding. And there's a mayor council action step regarding this, where the, the direction was to basically assess our assets and determine what the gaps are and then offer a funding plan. So there'll be more coming forward on that. And then the facilities master plan, you know, there's, we're seeing it, you know, we're under construction here in the building. You all approved some money so that we could relocate the HR staff out of the building, which was not our preference, but when, when we grow and we have no room to grow, that's the only way to make room is to move people out until we get to that implementation stage of the facilities master plan where we actually expand this building. And as the mayor mentioned, we're also building two fire stations. So finally, well, finally, for the strategic areas, economic recovery and development, the mayor and council allocated $250,000 in ARPA funding for relief to local businesses related to COVID. We had announced this recently, but it probably bears repeating. There's also a new statewide business-to-business program for restaurants, hotels, and creative industries that are, that are continuing to feel the effects or did not get funding in the past, so that's something that people can pursue in those areas. But we're really trying hard to leverage the activities that we have influenced downtown and/or are just benefiting from downtown. So we have influenced the Hotel Royer through the redevelopment agreement that we have, and we're seeking to activate the, the area around the hotels to make that a good experience and make, and help make the hotel a success. But some other things have happened that are fortuitous, like the H Mart project is going to be really important, and we, and we want to leverage the opportunity to have so many students coming downtown that haven't come downtown in the past. And then, of course, the County Plaza Building. When, when they're complete, they'll be moving in several hundred employees, and that'll really provide a lot more demand for things, at least during the day, and then things that are a little farther out, like, you know, the redevelopment of the jail site. There's, there's just so much happening downtown, and, you know, it all takes time, but we're feeling optimistic about all that. And then there's a couple of other things I just want to point out that don't fit neatly into any of those categories. So we're proposing an additional position in financial services, and there's, there's a variety of things that, that we need that additional capacity for, but here, we've talked about, without being too specific, we've talked about whether or not we could, we should be implementing additional sources of revenue, and in order to do that, there's, there's staff work behind it that has to happen, among other things that would among other things that would give us capacity to do that work, to raise additional revenues. We are increasing a business analyst position that we have in IT right now. That's a .6 FTE position right now. We're increasing it to 1.0 FTE. We find that this person, their, their primary role is to help us leverage the software that we buy. So rather than just thinking about it very narrowly, they help the staff understand and then help them implement additional modules of, of software or leveraging the software to a greater extent. And that has proven to be a very valuable position. So we're, we're looking to expand that. We've included $29,000 in recurring expenses for cybersecurity enhancements. And those are unspecified at the moment, but what we know is we need more. Because every year when we go back to the insurance company or representative, and they want to know what we're doing on cyber, every year the bar goes up in order for us to qualify for the insurance. And Sanford's been great about being creative, about, about enhancing, incrementally enhancing our security posture. So we just want to have some money available for the, the next thing that we know is going to land. We've added money for the fire department records management system that, that they needed to, to change systems rather unexpectedly. And we've managed to make the switch, but we needed to give them the, the recurring expenses to maintain their new system. And then we're, we're proposing $35,000 in recurring expenses for recruiting, because it's continuing to be a challenging environment to hire staff. And the expectation is that on average, we will probably be recruiting at least one executive level position a year. And we've had a couple recently. And now we hope to give Fami a little bit of a, a little bit of a rest in that regard. But we want to be sure that we're well-positioned to be competitive. And so we're proposing that additional money for recruiting. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ally to explain her charts and graphs.
All right. So this chart shows the total revenues for all funds. The total revenues for fiscal year '24 is a total of $77.5 million, which is 16.5 million higher than fiscal year '23.
Ally, speak more into the mic a little bit, so we can, everybody can hear you.
Sorry. All right. So the increase is primarily due to plans to issue bonds in the capital improvement and the central TIF funds related to the construction of the two new fire stations and a development incentive for the Landmark Hotel. So and about 40 million of the total, or 52%, are reported in the general fund, which provides for most basic city services. And then in fiscal year '23, we have seen sales and related tax revenues in the general fund performed better than what we had initially projected. So as a result, we revised the fiscal year 2023 estimates to reflect this upward trend. So the decrease in the general fund revenues is about 1.2 million from the fiscal year '23 revised estimate. So this is because we anticipate that the growth that we are seeing now in this current fiscal year will be temporary and that it will slowly go back to the pre-pandemic pace in fiscal year '24. All right. So the next chart, this shows the breakdown of taxes for most properties in Urbana. And as you can see, the city's portion is 12%, but only 3% or about 1.7 million goes to the general fund to pay for city services. And the largest share of property tax goes to the library, closely followed by the police and fire pensions. School district is responsible for 55% of the total. And then other taxing districts, such as the Park District, Parkland College Townships make up the balance. So this chart shows the total fiscal year '24 budget by department. And as you can see, the largest share of the budget is public works, at a little over 41%. So this includes expenditures for capital improvements. And this can vary quite, quite a bit depending on the capital plan. And the next is the community development, which is slightly less than 23%. And police is slightly less than 14%, followed by fire, which is slightly less than 10%. General services is 5%, which includes expenditures in the VERF and retained risk fund, which are not attributed to a single department. So next, this chart shows the expenditures by class for all funds. Year '23, it shows that we have a higher capital spending compared to fiscal year '21 and '22. And it's also the same for fiscal year '24. We also have a big year spend, capital spending, which again, this can vary considerably based on timing of capital improvement projects. So the total expenditures is 90.6 million. And majority of that is for personnel, which is about 37% of the total. And that includes salaries and benefits and contributions to pension plans. Right. So this chart shows the general fund revenues by source. So focusing on the general operating fund, we can see that revenues come from a wide variety of sources. The total estimated revenues for the general fund is about 43 million. State and, state sales and use tax revenues is the largest piece of the pie, about 34% combined, followed by income tax and property tax, which is a little over 13% of each. So as I've mentioned earlier, majority of the property tax revenues in the general fund passes through police and fire pensions, which is about 75% of the total in the general fund's property tax revenues. So this slide shows us the expenditures by class in the general fund. So the total general fund expenditures in fiscal year '24 is 45.4 million. And majority of that expenditure in the general fund is again for salaries and benefits, including contributions to pension funds, which is about 67% of the total general fund expenditures. All right. So we, there are two primary indicators that we use of the fiscal health. So one is the balance between recurring revenue and expenditures. And second is the fund balance as a percent of recurring expense. So this chart shows comparison between fiscal year '22's actual, fiscal year '23 estimated, and fiscal year '24 proposed budget recurring revenues and expenses. So fiscal year '24 recurring expense, it is 96.3% of recurring revenue, which is within our policy guideline of 98.5%. So that guideline ensures that we can maintain a stable budget, even with modest fluctuations in revenue. So maintaining a stable budget allows us to continue to consistently provide services to our residents even during a moderate recession. And this chart illustrates the relationship between, excuse me, fund balance and recurring expenditures, which is also included in the financial policies. So the fund balance is, and the general fund is our emergency reserves. So this allows us to predictably provide services to our residents and to take time to be thoughtful about budget reductions if it becomes necessary to make cuts. So a strong fund balance is also an important component of fiscal condition assessments that may be made by others, including lenders, which, you know, may enable us to obtain lower interest rates. So our current fund bond, balance policy is 25% of recurring expenditures. And in this budget, the fiscal year '24 estimated ending fund balance is 19.1 million, of which the 7 million is assigned for future transfers to fund capital improvements, including 1 million for a second round of projects through the equity and quality of life program. So these assignments are reflected in the capital improvement plan. So not including that assigned portion, the ending fund balance would be about 12.1 million, which is 29.76% of recurring expenditures. So the fund balance is projected to be higher than initially estimated at the end of this current fiscal year. And part of the reason why that is, because the staffing vacancy. So we anticipate that won't be, that we won't be seeing, you know, fund balance to be as high as we are seeing now, as we fill in more vacancies in the near term. And in addition, some revenues, particularly sales and related taxes, performed better than what we had initially estimated. So by the end of fiscal year '24, we expect it to be above 25% of recurring expenditures. And the orange line on the chart shows that level. So I am going to hand it back over to Elizabeth, where she will take on final thoughts.
Okay. So just quickly, looking ahead, we're, we're in a very good position in terms of financial stability. I don't really see any concerns about maintaining current services. But we all just need to keep in mind that making significant changes in the level of service in the future likely will require revenue increases. So we also have virtually no debt. And I, and I know it might be kind of a scary thought for some of you, but that gives us capacity to borrow for things like capital projects. So you will, we'll probably be having some discussion about that. You know, probably sometime in the fall, because we'll be preparing to, to issue debt at that point. And that's something that would always come to council. That can't happen without council action. So I'm going to quickly run through our plan for budget review. So we've organized this as we did last year with specific topics. So tonight, as soon as we wrap up with this presentation, we'll talk about police training. And then the IT business analyst and UPTV. And then the library will make a presentation about their budget. And then next week, June 12th, we'll have a presentation on the special projects manager position in public works. We'll talk about the building inspector in community development that will be becoming a permanent position. We'll talk about, actually Ally will present some information on some funding requests in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. They actually pertain to three different departments. So she's going to take that on, but we'll have others here to answer questions. And we're also going to talk about the proposal for an additional position in financial services. Then on June 20th, which is a Tuesday meeting because of the Juneteenth holiday, we will have our public hearing that was actually advertised in the News Gazette on Sunday as required by city code and state law. And then we will have the budget ordinance and the budget amendment to, at that committee meeting to hopefully be moved on to the council agenda. And then on June 26th, that would be the final night to approve the, the budget ordinance and the budget amendment. Just as a reminder, by law, we're required to adopt a budget by June 30th. Also, a quick note about changes prior to budget approval. I know that can get confusing, and that's happened in the past. So if we're discussing a particular topic and you want to make a change or do something different, it would be really helpful to us as staff if you could pull that. And if it appears that there's majority support for that change, then we can do the numbers and, and we can incorporate that into the budget ordinance. You will get a list of all the changes in an exhibit that will come to you with the budget ordinance on the 20th and the committee of the whole meeting. We also may ask questions to clarify our understanding. If there are proposed changes, it's just sometimes challenging to translate those words into actual numbers in the budget. So with that, we're happy to take questions, or we can move on to the next presentation.
James.
All right. So thank you for the presentation. I'm going to, Elizabeth, I'm going to ask you, look in your crystal ball and tell me what you feel about the risk of a recession is in the, in the next fiscal year for the city.
Oh, gosh.
Because that, I mean, that's the, the big issue, right? With regard to being prepared, having, having a rainy day planned is for when it rains.
Yeah.
And I would say right now, the messages are really mixed about whether we're going to have a recession before the end of this calendar year and how deep a one it will be.
Right.
Leaning towards maybe we won't have one, or maybe it'll be very light.
I, I would say this, I, I feel like it's somewhat likely. But we are in a position financially where I'm not overly concerned about that. If we have a, you know, mild to moderate, short-lived recession, I think we're in a perfect position to continue to deliver services, draw down some fund balance if necessary, and bounce right back.
My experience has been that even if we do have a recession, that the university is a buffer against it. And when the university feels the recession, it's usually delayed a year or two after the, after the major economy, because it filters into what the state does and spending and such.
Yeah. I mean, not everything happens immediately. Some of the things, one thing that can happen is if people become fearful of the idea of a recession, they may pull back spending. That can affect our revenues, even if there's no actual recession. But other impacts tend to be delayed, like the impact on property values we saw after the 2008, 2009 recession was, that's a little bit of a delayed reaction. But still, I think we're in a, we're in a good position to weather that. And we'll keep a close eye on things, we always do.
Chris.
Thank you, Sharice. Now playing the role of doofus and ignorant city council member, I would like to ask. I saw like $43 million of recurring revenue, and then this giant 90 million expenditure. Could you explain why I don't understand that?
Well, I, I think, I think in one of those slides, we were talking about the general fund only. And I think in one, we were talking about all city funds. So there's a series of charts that talk about all the funds combined. And there's a, there's a series that focused just on the general fund, particularly because that's where we pay for most of our basic city services, most of what public works does, police and fire.
So we spend 90 million total?
Yeah, for all, for all funds.
How come we're not in debt if we only got 43 million coming in?
That reflects grants from-
Oh, grants.
-state and federal.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And ARPA.
Good clarification. Thank you. Have we already taken out the construction bonds on the fire stations? You're counting it, so I'm wondering if we've already taken it out.
No, we have not. But the budget is a planning document, right?
Right, right.
We, we cannot issue debt without city council approval, so you will absolutely know when that happens.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Grace.
Thank you so much for the presentation. You answered a lot of my questions along the way. But if I could clarify what you were asking us to do with proposed changes? Did you say to pull that? I wasn't sure what your request was on how to communicate ahead of time any proposed amendments.
Right. So as, as we go, as we go through these presentations that we're going to have on specific topics, if you have a proposed change, it's helpful to us if you pull that so that we can know if there's majority support for that change, and then we can work that into the budget ordinance.
I see. So you're saying as we go through these presentations over the next few weeks, to mention it there for some preparation for staff?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, ladies. Next, we have our wonderful interim chief, Richard Searls, and someone I don't know.
So this is Lieutenant Zach Mikulak.
Okay.
He also is an interim. While Zach is getting this ready, since Minnie Pearson was apparently so kind to say nice things about me while I was outside, I wanted to publicly thank her for her kindness and support over the last year, 15 months, along with several members of city staff and city council. So thank you very much, Minnie, for those kind words. She's not here, but publicly thanking her too. Okay. So this is what we've got tonight. This is one of the requests from the police department, and it's regarding additional training funds. So the department has lagged in increasing funding for increasing training needs for more than a decade. Training now is more technical, demanding, extensive, and expensive than it was 10 years, 10-plus years ago. The, one of the reasons that we're coming with- with an additional request this evening is because of statutory changes to the minimum training requirements for police officers in the state of Illinois as a result of the Safety Act. We have captured what we believe are all the efficiencies that we can in our operations, which is to say, we've gotten, we've gotten all the blood out of that rock that we're going to get. We simply don't have any more to squeeze out. The budget analysis was extensive and took multiple months. I didn't do it. Lieutenant Mikulik did. And so it represents our, his, current prediction as to what anticipated costs will be moving forward with those additional trainings. Based on his analysis, we believe that we need approximately $50,000, and that is our ask, $50,000 to supplement the existing training budget. And this is the breakdown of the $50,000. $30,000 of that would go directly to the Patrol Division for actual training costs, $10,000 to the Investigations Division, and we've budgeted $10,000 for overtime training costs as related to training.
So as Chief Searls alluded to, the Safety Act was signed in 2020, 2021 by Governor J.B. Pritzker. In July of 2022, it went into effect. The Safety Act saw some much-needed reform in Illinois policing. It covered a wide array of topics. And one of those topics included training. In response to those changes, the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board asked for a 62, I'm sorry, that's the governing body for training in the state of Illinois. They asked for a 62% increase in their budget in 2022. And then again, the following year, they requested a $10 million increase in their budget specifically for problems that have arose in addressing all the changes that have come from the Safety Act. That being said, the changes were, were great. And we're feeling the effects of them now. And we're still trying to wade through exactly what all those changes are and what they mean for individual departments. So some of those changes to training occur annually. Things like crisis intervention training, law updates, officer wellness, mental health, and firearms qualification. There's training that's now required every three years, 30 hours of sexual assault, trauma-informed response, civil and human rights, procedural justice, as well as specifically for use of force. Every three year, every three years, officers are required to have six hours of scenario-based role-playing and de-escalation training and six hours of high-risk traffic stop training. Every five years, they're required to get training on psychology of domestic violence. The Atlanta Police Department has done a good job of already training in several of those areas. However, due to our current budget, we're not able to cover all of the training that is now mandated by the Safety Act. When Chief Searls asked me to take a look at our training and how it lined up with the new mandates, one of the first things I did is went back and looked at all of our past training and tried to get an idea for where exactly our money was going and where our time was going. I categorized and organized all of our training into these categories. And as you can see on the bottom here, making up the base of our training, the most important is satisfying those state mandates. The next level, Level 2, is our basic officer skills. These include things like standardized field sobriety testing, interview interrogation techniques, and first aid. This is the bulk of the skills that your average officer would learn throughout the course of their training and yearly, yearly requirements. The next level is instructors and specialty positions. So we have field training officers, master firearms instructors, specialty positions like negotiators and SWAT team members. Level 4 is the advanced officer skills. Typically, these are reserved for veteran officers or detectives. And then finally, Level 5 is conferences. Level 3 and Level 4 are the instructors and specialties in our advanced officer skills. These are particularly important to a department of our size because we, we can avoid sending officers to specialized training by actually having trainers come or go. We send officers to get training and they come back and they're training their trainers so they can teach our officers without having to send them out. As well as the advanced officer skills, officers can go to these trainings. They can get trained up on advanced skills and then bring those back to their fellow officers. What, what we're focusing on, though, is not necessarily those, those skills. We're focusing on the first two levels, just your basic officer skills and your state mandates. We, like I said, we've tried to cut costs in some areas by having those officers trained and training our officers. But for these basic mandates, we simply can't, can't do that. There, there are several reasons why this is important. One, like I said, it's just to cover our, our basic mandates. We can, we can train our officers up to a certain level of standard. And, I'm sorry, one second. Train of thought there. I think we can all agree that, that we want officers who are confident and competent in their skills. By, by having this training or having this budget, we can get our officers that training that they need to satisfy that mandates, to satisfy those mandates and to have officers who are able to de-escalate situations and, and use the skills that they've learned.
You know, I think it's important, if, could you go back one slide?
Yep.
Lieutenant Mikulik. I, I think it's important to understand that, you know, this last slide here, I think, is, is, is also especially relevant. You know, the, you know, Lieutenant Mikulik talks about training the trainer and the return on investment. When we send officers out to go to classes, those can be very expensive. And so we can capture some additional efficiencies by, by getting those train-to-trainer opportunities so we can, we can teach the class ourself. And, and that helps sort of minimize our, our needs. And as Lieutenant Mikulik referenced, eliminating some of that community expectation gap in terms of, we want our officers to perform to a certain level. Well, we need to train them to a certain level as well. This, this, this request for budget is substantial. I understand that. But based on the changes in the statute, I believe it's necessary. And so we, we humbly ask for the additional funds. I was staring at Mary Ellis the whole time.
Okay, Mary Ellis.
All right, well, I get to get into the weeds, right?
Of course you are.
All right, I tried to make a list here. So I guess my first question is, you're asking for an additional $50,000?
Correct.
What is the existing training budget?
Approximately the same.
Okay, so we're talking about doubling it?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's across all divisions.
That's across all divisions, all right. And then, would you mind going back to the slide that talks about the years, the number of years? There we go. So it says annually, no minimum. What does no minimum mean?
So what we, what we've come to find, it's all been kind of vaguely defined for us so far. But what, what it means is basically that as long as officers receive some level of training-
Speak a little bit better into the mic.
Sorry about that. What it means is that as long as officers receive some level of training in that. And it could be a, it could be a four-hour refresher course, a crisis intervention training, for example.
I see, because you've got 30 hours and 12 hours. I see, so they're not defining the number of hours spent.
Right, just as long as they receive some level of training within the, of those categories every single year.
Okay, so my, my next question is, out of this list here, which are the mandated training, what have we not been doing?
There, well, there's, there's several things that we've not been doing. Some of them have been one-off trainings that we do semi-annually. Some of them, we haven't been doing at all. Specifically, the officer wellness and mental health, we have not been covering that every single year. Not every single officer, every three years, would get training on sexual assault and trauma-informed response. The high-risk traffic stops, we almost never do training on that. And de-escalation, last year was the first time that we trained on that. And that was a one-off payment. We, we don't have any plans at this time or funds to do that yearly.
And, and just one final question I'll let other people ask. So when you, you cut down the amount of money for each of the divisions within the Police Department, if I remember correctly, a lot of it has to do with overtime payment. But the, the $50,000, is that paying for class? Or is that paying for overtime or is it doing both?
So the top two numbers are paying for classes and things related to training. The bottom number is related to personnel costs.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, Sharice. Where's the training happening? Is that PTI or Springfield or here or?
Yeah, so we, we have several options for officers to go to training. One is right here in Ileas in Urbana. We can go train here. The Police Academy is another one. But we also have a mutual agreement with several, they're called mobile training units. There's one in Charleston, there's one in Springfield. And often, we can send our officers to those classes free of charge, but they will still incur sometimes travel costs per DM lodging and stuff like that. So there's several around the region that we attend. But then it expands nationwide as well.
Yeah, the vast majority of, sorry, the vast majority of our training is done locally. You know, it's less expensive if they just have to drive a mile down the road.
Right, right.
There are some classes that we simply don't have those opportunities with and we might have to send somebody off. So for example, when I was a young detective, I spent a month in Chicago going to a class. That can be very expensive. And so those are the sorts of things that while we sometimes have to do, we try to avoid them when we can.
Okay. Well, before I even got sworn in, talking about budget priorities, I talked about, you know, the need for de-escalation because it's not easy. And it takes a lot of training and a lot of practice to really perform that. So, well worth the cost, I think, so.
Okay, James and then Grace.
All right, thank, thank you for this. I don't get to do this often enough anymore, but exactly how much money did the state provide for us to meet this training requirement?
Well, I happen to know the answer to that right off the top of my head. And the answer is zero.
So I, I do want to point out that, you know, while we all may agree that this is important and needed, that the request to do this did not come with any additional funding from the state to accomplish it. So it, it is a big deal. I, I will, I will ask, maybe you've done this, but I have to ask on behalf of our public that you sharpen the pencils and make sure these things that look like big round numbers actually are what we're going to need and will do the job. It sounds like we were planning for over the next three years, that there's a cycle that we're going to have to build in over the next three years. And if, I'd like a little more assurance than these three numbers here that if we do this, it's going to cover the new model that we need to cover. Because doubling our training costs to cover, what I heard was three or four things that we're not able to do all the time or maybe one that we aren't doing, does sound like a long, a long reach cost-wise. So I'd like a little, maybe some more detail.
So this is what I can tell you. Lieutenant Mikulik put together a spreadsheet and it took him 45 minutes to explain it to me. So there's lots of calculations going on here. I didn't figure we had 45 minutes to go through the spreadsheet, so we're going to try to compress it to the best we can. With respect to these numbers, these are, these are a prediction. If you held a gun to my head and said, "Hey, Rich, do you think this is going to be enough?" My best guess is probably not. That's my best guess. And we decided this was the place to start. It's, it's not that it's just onesies, twosies. It really is more substantive training for every officer, all the way up to the Chief of Police, on more subjects. And so we've been sort of playing whack-a-mole. This year, we, we haven't done this training in a really long time, so we're going to train on this. Well, next year, we haven't done this training in a really long time, so we're going to train on that. So for example, several months ago, Lieutenant Mikulik put together some active shooter training. It was relevant and it was timely. We hadn't done active shooter training in quite some time, years. That's the sort of thing that honestly, we should be training on every year. And we hadn't been. So we got the training in and it's good, but that took a lot of time and it costs, it costs money. So I, I understand what you're saying with the numbers. They seem too convenient. You know, when, when Lieutenant Mikulik showed me the spreadsheet and he explained it to me, it came out to, I think it was a little more than $50,000, but we put in for $50,000.
All right, thanks. And, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping Chief Boone is watching this and this is some of the thing, one of the things he can put in his pocket as being a data man, you know, knowing where our force is, just a quick kind of dashboard as to meeting the requirements in a given year, maybe, would be a great thing to have.
So one of the things that Lieutenant Mikulik has the responsibility for is, is watching sort of the dashboard for every officer that we have saying, "Hey, you need training on this. You can do this online." "Hey, you need training on that. You need to go to this class." He sends reminders out all the time in terms of, "You have this training to do," so.
Yeah, that would be a great tool in helping us understand if we made it or why we're short. I, I think as council, if something like a dashboard like that became available, it'd help us understand how we were doing against those goals.
Go ahead, Grace.
Thanks. Thank you for the information. I agree with the importance of training and this is much smaller amount than what we've previously approved for wage increases and bonuses. And that, one could argue that this has a, a benefit for the community and the officers. I was trying to figure out, I thought that we had $35,000, which I thought was reoccurring for de-escalation training. I thought was spawned from a resolution. Was it the racial equity resolution? I'm not sure, but is that included in the $50,000 a year total training budget you mentioned?
I'm sorry, I was getting ready to answer a question that I think you were alluding to. Can you say the last question again, please?
About, do we have $35,000 reoccurring from, for de-escalation training? Is that included in the $50,000?
I believe that's a, I believe that was a one-time allocation. Is that correct, Lieutenant? Yes.
Okay, so that $50,000 doesn't include that? That's just regular training?
So we got a spike last year in training and it was right at $20,000 for ABL, which we're going to be doing the training on here in about two weeks. So I, I think what you're referring to is it was a one-time allocation. It's, it's not $35,000 for de-escalation.
Okay, so we're currently at $50,000 for all training and this is a proposal of a-
Thereabouts, yeah.
An additional $50,000 for this.
That's correct, based on our projection of training needs.
Yeah, thank you. And then, is this the time for, I mean, is this the Police Department budget presentation opportunity? I mean, it looks like we won't have another presentation. I didn't know if, if we're talking about throw things out if this is the time. It looks like there's not another Police Department one or if this is just training.
We're just, as we did last year, we're just presenting the things that are different. So if you have something that you want to either ask about or mention that's more in the base budget, then I, I think this would be a good time to do that. Although this is a presentation, so I don't know. I don't know how, I don't know how to handle that.
I think we should stick to the presentation and then you have other questions. I'm sure his email is available.
Sure, it just sounds like the opposite of what we were advised to do in the previous presentation, but yes.
Okay. Mary Ellis, could you take the chair for a minute?
Sure, I will take the chair and the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay, I just want to understand and, and make it, make it plain. Basically, the Safety Act, period, which is a state mandated act regarding police training, and it's an unpaid mandate.
Yes, it's a totally unfunded mandate from the state of Illinois.
Okay, so it's unfunded mandate, which requires you all to have so many hours Okay, so it's unfunded mandate, which requires you all to have so many hours of different types of training, per department, per division, so on and so forth.
It's by officer, yes.
Okay. Some of these trainings, we already did. And some of these trainings, we have officers that are qualified trainers that come back and train the, the other officers.
Correct. And Lieutenant Mikulik can speak to the particulars of this, but we also, in order for the training to count, we also need to get it certified by the state.
Right, so I was gonna say, I'm sure there's some certificate or something, because I know even I get a certificate when I do some kind of little cyber training thing.
It's more complex than just giving the training. We have to, we have to send lesson plans off to the state and get it administratively approved, and bless, in order for us to get credit towards the mandates.
And so when our, our officers actually go and do the training, whether they're doing it right here on the blacktop, or at PTI, or something like that, they, they will be getting paid.
Yes, they're either going to be on regular duty time, or they'll be on overtime.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, get that under my hat, so that I, I'm really bad at math. And so, part of that, the training cost is not just, another question I have. When we have our own trainers, do we pay them to train, or do they, will they already, will they just, you know, this is like part of their, their duties?
It depends on the circumstances, but it is conceivable that a trainer could be training during their regular duty time, or depending on the scheduling, they could be, be paid overtime. One of the things that's, there's a lot of levers when you're trying to pull out the logistics of training. And one of the things that you run into when you're understaffed, is you can't pull people from regular duty time to have them train. And so then that sort of pushes it towards overtime. We're currently in one of those situations where we're relatively short-staffed, where we've made inroads on that, but it's going to take us months to get out from underneath that sort of crush. So, the, the training that occurs from in-house trainers will probably, in the short term, be largely overtime. And then, once we have sufficient staffing to manage, you know, calls for service in the street, and in regular duties, then what we can do is we can start to pull staffing from those duties, because we have sufficient amounts to cover those responsibilities, and adjust their time, and so they would be paid regular time. It's, it's a dance.
Yeah, it's a razor's edge. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to have some kind of understanding with that.
I will relinquish the chair. Back to Sharice.
Thank you very much, Mary Alice. And is there anyone else, Grace?
Thank you. I just want to mention the issue that if this is the time when we're supposed to mention potential proposals, and then also say, well, it's just a presentation, not a discussion, then those things don't align with me. I think it needs to either be a discussion, or say that there's a different time to address that. As, seeing as this is not something that it's just email the individuals about, I will mention this now, if anything, just so that it can't be said that it came out of the blue, and I hadn't mentioned it before. This is something that was brought up last year, that we had some works on, and then it just kind of fell into the abyss, about clarifying that the approved budget does not include funds for license plate reader or other surveillance technologies without specific approval from city council. Last year, this was also proposed, it got a little in the weeds, I think. And it's something that I plan to propose. Of course, it depends on majority of council support. Not sure if we're saying that this is or is not the time or place to do that, but I'm going to mention it now. Thank you.
Mary Alice.
All right, I'm just gonna out myself here. I don't have a copy of the fiscal year 2024 budget, so we're all, we're all talking about this budget. I mean, I guess maybe I've missed something in, okay, all right. Usually, we get a packet, right?
Yeah, book.
Book. Is the plan that we're going to get a book this year? So I guess, sorry.
Yes, you were supposed to get a book. I'm not sure why it wasn't with the packet.
Okay, so I guess, given that myself and perhaps others haven't read all the budget yet, I would like to propose that maybe Elizabeth and Carol, you can tell us, you know, in email, what you're, what you would like to see from city council, if we have suggestions for budget changes, because we need to be able to see the budget first.
I'm assuming that, is there anything else that you'd like to say, Chief Searls?
Not for me, Lieutenant Mikulik.
Could you say your name again?
Zachary Mikulik.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had the name correct. Zachary Mikulik. I don't, didn't want to mispronounce. Well, okay, Chris?
Well, I just have a question in general. So when does this, what I guess is a budget amendment, or something ordinance, gonna happen to, you know, for us to vote on?
So you're gonna vote on the budget ordinance on June 26th, right? You'll see it in Committee of the Whole on the 20th.
Okay.
Any other questions for our presenters?
Grace? Did want to clarify that point, because yes, I was a little confused not having the budget in front of us also, but for us and also for the public, that there is the proposed FY24 budget on the city website for people to hopefully review before the public hearing on the 20th, when it will come before Committee of the Whole. And I do just want to clarify the point, because I'm still confused if I, what I thought I heard and asked in clarification in the first presentation, was that these presentations on each specific department are the time to bring up ideas, proposals, so that staff have a heads-up. And then I'm also hearing that it's the presentation, and let's wait until we have the budget. And I'm confused about when this is, and this happened in the past, and I don't want it to be out of the blue, but I'm trying to ask, when is the best time for these things?
Okay, Elizabeth is gonna try to answer that for you.
So Carol, Carol and I will talk tomorrow, and one of us will email something to you with some specifics.
Any more questions regarding this presentation? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, we have IT business analyst, and I think that's Sanford, and UP TV program manager. Good evening.
I was asked to answer a couple of questions for counsel preemptively with these slides, and so being an IT person, I took this pretty literally. So I will ask and then answer the questions we were suggested to cover. This is about a new full-time role in the IT division that is a business analyst. The need here is that, as was alluded to earlier by Carol, the departments continue to improve their operations through purchasing new solutions, usually software, and IT needs to support them with that software. So often, this starts in the process with the procurement. It can also go through a project implementation, where there's a project management function, and then there's support on an ongoing basis. And something I really want to emphasize, because when we talk about IT, we usually sort of lump everybody into one big bucket of IT people, but there's actually different kinds of IT skills. And this is very different skill set from the people who support our hardware networks. It's a whole different education even, as well as expertise. So the way this is going to help the city, is that we need to support all the different departments, and make sure that they're able to do their jobs. And also, this person is going to absorb a lot of these functions, because I'm going to be leaving the city during the fiscal year. So currently, I perform a lot of these duties myself, and it's important to have some knowledge transfer going on before I'm out the door. The picture of success that we would have here is that departments are able to get the work done, most importantly. A lot of what we do in terms of supporting them with software is either answering questions, or changing settings, or dealing with support on their behalf, which is always a very difficult process. So that helps them be more efficient, helps avoid mistakes. And I think the most important thing, it helps us make, as Carol alluded to earlier, good use of the software dollars we've already spent, and good selections during procurements, and good projects when we do buy software. So there's a whole set of improvements that can go on when we do a good job with what we buy. Some cost information, and I will not take credit for the not-round numbers here. This was crunched out by our excellent finance and HR staff. So the new position for this fiscal year, it is, it is a new position, so there's $103,954 of new spending. Here, we are budgeting to maintain our current person who's .6, so she works three days a week. We are budgeting to continue with her for the upcoming fiscal year to sort of support the transition and knowledge transfer, but with the assumption that the .6 position will not continue after this coming fiscal year. So the savings will come in FY25 and And then we were asked to just sort of provide a little org chart. So this is the IT division org chart. As you can see, on the left-hand side, we have a network administrator, a network systems technician, and a computer systems technician. So those three people are really the fundamental hardware support people. They take care of all the networks, the computers, the printers, the scanners, everything else that gets thrown at them. And then we have the business analyst role that supports, as I mentioned, the software used by the city. So at this point, I will pause and answer questions relating to the business analyst role.
Mary Alice.
So, would you mind going back one slide? Okay, so I understand that we have a .6 FTE right now, person in place. So the proposal is, is that we have a complete one FTE, 1.6 for year one, and then one in year two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's where the 50,000 savings comes in next fiscal year, not the upcoming fiscal year.
Correct.
I, for some reason, was under the impression that the .6 FTE person would be the new FTE, or are you going to be advertising for a new position?
That is not determined, and we've been having conversations. So that is one scenario. I will, I will say that is one scenario, but there are other scenarios as well.
So if the scenario is that the person who's currently residing in the .6 FTE decides, and you agree that they should take on the full time, what happens with the .6? Do you backfill that person?
No. No, in that scenario, we would just jump from having a .6 position to a 1.0 position.
Okay, so in that case, it's possible that you won't need $50,000 in your budget, and you're really only increasing it by, thank you.
Were that to happen, you're correct. But.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Were that to happen, you are correct. Were we to move the person who's .6 up to full-time, then we would not quite need so much difference. But.
Okay, and do you know.
I'm not going to bank on that.
Do you, do you know when that decision will be made?
Well, first of all, we need to get the position to have the conversation with her. But it's, it's really up to that employee in terms of what her preferences are, as well as management decisions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the update on this. I was wondering if this proposal would help with any of the broadcasting of meeting quality, potentially?
This person doesn't work with UP TV. She would, or he would just be supporting the departments and their software use across the city. So that's a different function of IT.
I see. But does that not include under the umbrella as UPT as part of one of those city departments?
It is part of the IT function, but it's not this person's role. This person doesn't deal with UP TV.
Thank you.
More questions? Thank you, Sanford. I think we're done.
Why, I can't leave yet.
No, we're not done. Carol's done. Sorry, Carol.
He's done with his three slides, and now I have my three slides.
Oh, sorry about that.
So speaking of UP TV, so we decided that it was time to have an explicit conversation about something that we're not proposing to fund, which is usually not what we talk about in the budget, because that could be long conversations about the many, many things that we're not proposing to fund. However, this is, we are not proposing to fund the UPT programming coordinator. And so a little history helps to frame this out. So, when I first came in 2018, we had a gentleman named Jake, who was the part-time UPT station manager. And he retired in 2019. And when he retired, Jason Liggett sort of absorbed his responsibilities, and we cut that halftime position. I neglected to include the cut, because that's an important part of this. And then, when Jason left, which was late 2021, he was replaced with a production coordinator, which was his original job. And so the, the piece that he had absorbed, the station manager job, did not get replaced. It was not funded because it had been cut back in 2019. So, thank you for advancing the slide. So, what happened from that point is we were in, when Jason left, we were in the middle of COVID, and things were changing. And so, COVID actually changed the way some folks do public access programming. One of the things that happened for us is we used to have people routinely come in and use that little studio over there, or they would even film in this room when it wasn't in use. And all of that was curtailed. And now, also with the proliferation of social media platforms, people are able to do their own production of their own programs through those various platforms. So now, what we're proposing is still to, and we've been limping along, so we have some semblance of public access, and we're doing it, I would say, not very well. And it's also putting certain burdens onto the production coordinator, and, and that's not, that's not working. It's just, it's too much, and it's distracting from the core work. So I wanted to have just an explicit opportunity to say that we are not proposing to fund the UPT station manager, program coordinator, whatever you want to call it. And so then, we would be curtailing public access programming on UP TV. So all those, all those public programs that are not produced, that are governmental in nature, would not, would not continue to be aired. We would be focusing on the meetings, whether they were live meetings, like what's happening right now, or the replays of meetings like this, and the meetings of the, of the other government entities that we have IGAs with. So that would be the Park District, the School District, RPC.
RPC, the Housing Authority, and I feel like I'm leaving one out.
Library?
Library.
Yeah. Sorry. And then the UP TV commission would be eliminated, because there wouldn't be a role for them anymore. So, again, this is, we're, we're not proposing to fund something that we haven't been funding for a while, and we're trying to be explicit about, about that, so that we can stop limping along with doing something that is, we're not doing well, and that there is ample replacement for. And it's, it's interesting, if you look at some of the programs that are on UP TV, if you, if you Google them, or whatever, they'll tell you all the other ways you can get their programs on social media platforms and so forth. So I don't know that there's any entity that is solely reliant on UP TV at this point. Happy to answer any questions on that. Chris?
So, as an old UP TV viewer, I remember shows like The Truth Be Told, I think The Underwoods had a television show, there was The Psychotic Comedian, there was Democracy Now, there was World Labor Hour, there were a number, Queens Corner with Val Ammons, there was also Cop's Corner. There were all these shows. And my question to you is, are those people that did those shows complaining about getting removed, or have they already left?
They have, there have, a lot of the people who recorded shows did not return after the pandemic. Some of them have been recording shows and sending us recordings, often on Zoom, and we've been helping a few of them record that way. But no one has clamored to come back and record their shows.
And that's what we talked about with you, Carol, earlier, is that there seems to be no demand for this right now, because of the, all the other platforms that you can use, right?
Yeah. I, and I don't know that there's not any demand, because there are alternatives. So that, I think that reduces the reliance on UP TV. I think some people actually appreciate that as an outlet, but that comes with a burden for the, for the city in order to provide that outlet. And because there's, you know, you actually have to have a schedule, and all of that has to be coordinated. And so I think it's in light of the other opportunities that people have to get their programming out in ways that cost them nothing, that's the direction we would prefer to go in, so that we can focus on the governmental entities that, that we, that we are obliged to serve, and that are part of the transparency, general transparency of government.
And also, this eliminates the lending of equipment. I remember there was a, you could check out a camera from UP TV. I guess that production. I guess that production studio is over with altogether. So like, there's no recording on the premises, I'm assuming there's no video editing and production on the premises either, right?
The only editing that we do is staff work related to some of the meetings that we record.
Right, right.
So I mean, the...
Also, you use it.
Studio isn't used by staff, but nobody from the public is really coming in and recording shows like they used to.
Okay, all right. It's sort of sad, but at the same time, I understand, there are so many platforms that, it's just kind of obsolete. I mean, back in 2003, this was all exciting, new, and needed at the time, but things have changed, so.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation here. I was trying to line this up with looking at the budget. Is this the cable TV PEG fund? It looks like that's what UPTV PEG is under.
So UPTV is actually split in half. There is a cable PEG fund, which is used for equipment. So that is a separate fund that is only, is the money that we get from the cable franchises, which has specific purposes. So that one contains the equipment spending, and then the employees are in the general fund. And so that's under the executive department and the general fund.
Okay, thank you. And who would oversee kind of putting out still the recording meetings and any very limited programming, as far as staff, if we're cutting this position? Who would be uploading? I don't know what all that entails.
So, okay, the production coordinator, Ibrahim, who's really done a great job with his job, which is production coordinator of the meetings. So he will continue to be on staff, he's going to continue to do what he's been doing, which is organizing the camera operators and the various other entities that we record, as well as the city, and all of our boards and commissions. That role is not going away. What's not being funded is the additional role that we used to have, that did more of the public access scheduling, getting of other content besides our meetings, all the other things that Chris mentioned that were, you know, that were, that were engaging 10, 15, 20 years ago, that's the part that's not being done.
Thank you. And would it be possible, I know we've had some back and forth, I think a lot of technical difficulties with some of our setup in here, as far as sound and video on the meeting broadcastings. So I just wanted to stress that I think it would be important, especially if we are kind of streamlining into that, to do, I understand not doing a bunch of things not well, but it's like, if we're going to do one thing, I think we should do that one thing well. And I know that there's some technical hurdles, but I think that's going to be really important if this is the focus we're going. I think we need to have really good quality.
Well, I'm really proud of the progress we've made since the council approved last year to do that emergency purchase and replacement, which occurred partly last fall and partly in December. The final piece of the puzzle is scheduled to be installed on June 27, I believe. It is a control for the microphones, so we can adjust them during the meeting. So that will hopefully be the last, last step. We have transitioned our meetings to YouTube Live, which we're very happy with as compared to Vimeo, which we're not so happy with, and we've stopped using Vimeo as a service. And we're also in the process of putting historical meetings on YouTube. So, you know, I really feel good about the progress that we've made.
Thank you.
James?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the progress that you've made, and I'm really looking forward to the 27th now, because the last I'm at a problem, it was, it was mic levels, that was the issue. But one other thing that I think is worth pointing out, that I think Chris and I talked about with Carol, is that not only has there been a drop in demand, there's also been a drop in revenue, because franchisees like AT&amp;T went to the state for a franchise for cable delivery. So when people buy cable TV from AT&amp;T, which a lot of you have seen fiber go in around their neighborhoods in the last year or so, none of that goes to the city as a cable franchise fee. And as you, as you know, everybody's switching to all these different streaming options, none of which pay into what traditionally Comcast, Xfinity, predecessors to them paid into this thing that we think of as the cable franchise fee. ITV3 may pay into it, because they actually went through the process of getting...
Correct.
...a relationship with the communities that they ran their cables through, as opposed to what AT&amp;T did. But the, the money that's there has gotten smaller in addition to the demand being smaller. I think it's important for the public to know that.
Anyone else with questions or comments for Carol or Stanford? This time, can I say you did a good job? Thank you.
I just want the record to reflect that council members now have a printed copy of the budget. I apologize it wasn't distributed with your packet, but...
Okay, and next, and we have, oh, our budget presentation from our executive director, the library, Celeste Choat. Yes.
Great. Well, as I say every year, thank you so much for your time and your attention and support of the Urbana Free Library. We couldn't do what we do and serve our community in the way that we do without our help with our city colleagues. I'm, I've got a couple pieces of information for you over just five slides. So we'll keep it simple and straightforward. What is in the budget pack, the budget book, is the draft budget that went to the library board in April. We give them a draft in April, and then we bring them a budget which has changes in it in May, because there's always something changing. So the handout that you got is a separate piece of paper, is what was approved in May, just this past month. And we anticipate a couple more changes that are smaller at the June board meeting next week. So these are two little girls at the fairy tale ball, having fun doing something with a, like hopscotch, hopscotch with beanbags. And it was really great to have over 1,000 people come to the fairy tale ball again. It was just like the old days before COVID, and much magic happened. And that is something that's supported by former library director Fred Schliff and his wife Diane Hillard, and we're excited about that. What you'll see in either version of the budget is that we focused a lot on the enhanced part of the strategic plan, stewarding our resources for growth and sustainability. And part of that has to do with doing a space needs analysis of the building. And we're working with a former library director, Fred Schliff, who's also a library consultant. And we're working with Engberg Anderson Architects to help us do some projects that will make the library staff more efficient and make it a more fun and engaging place to be in, by renovating Megan's room downstairs in the children's area, and renovating the circulation audiovisual area, which is kind of cramped with low ceilings and lots of shelving in the way. We want you to be able to engage with the fabulous library staff more easily and have them be more accessible, and do check-in and off-desk work, quote unquote, actually off the desks, so that staff can focus on you as a patron when you come in, and we can provide better service. We've reorganized the library recently, so we're focusing on front-of-house, quote-unquote, staff and back-of-house staff. So you will see in the budget that we've zeroed out one of the wage lines in the adult and youth services department. All of those staff were transferred to, quote-unquote, either patron services or collection services. So when you look at a staff line, you might wonder, where did they all go? They went to different departments, because we are working together as a team in different As we look at our revenue sources, as is normal for us, 85% of our revenue is property taxes. So when the property taxes dip, that definitely has a negative impact on how we are able to provide service, because so much of it is based on property taxes. Our expenses here are shifted a bit. If you look at that $1.2 million chunk of blue on the left, that is the circulation department. And again, now it's called patron services. And it's looking at all the different reference desks that are not the archives. So the children's desk, the information desk, the circulation desk, which will be most likely shared between the information desk people that do notaries, and the people who would check you out. We've now grouped the staff together, so you will get one, any of the people can help you with all the things. It's more efficient and easier for staff to manage as well. And the orange on the left, I'm sorry, the gray, the 449, that is the adult and youth services department, and that is basically the materials budget. We've left that in the department, so it's easy for the people to manage that. So it's very clear that when we look at Munis over the years, we can look at the collection money easily and consistently. There are a couple of state standards that the library needs to meet in order to get state funding and meet state standards. Two of those have to do with salaries and benefits. Salaries are supposed to account for up to 60% of the recurring budget. We are at 54%, so we're right about where we need to be. And then we can spend up to 70%, including fringe benefits. And if we add in the 14% of the budget for fringe benefits, that's 68%. Also, the state standards include information on collection, management, and resource sharing. So that has to do with everything from the physical books and DVDs, audiovisual materials, streaming materials, and then how you process them, and even having the card catalog, so that you can access the materials and also do interlibrary loan. So the goal is for all libraries in the state to spend between 8% and 12% of the budget. Some libraries judge this by counting in the stamping and the stickering and the paying for outside people to do all that processing as part of the cost. We measure ours two different ways, looking at if we include those extra costs or just the straight costs of collection itself. We are at either 25%, including the higher number, 12% at the lower number, the range is 8% to 12%. So we are meeting state standards. So know that we've got it covered. And if you're looking at the two different budgets, the April budget, which is the draft in the book, versus the May budget, the changes to look for of, again, adult and youth services wages are shifted to different departments with this reorganization. We have an 803 budget. Our 802s are the general fund. But libraries are allowed with state law to have a side special fund for special reserve, which has to do with IT and facilities, expansions, renovations, and like furnishings. So we have been putting some money aside, not as much as we need to, but some over the years. And so the difference between those two budgets is how much money we're setting aside to pull from that fund. We have a couple of projects that we anticipate costing a lot of money. One is the East Airhandler Unit on the old side of the building. The air handler's from 1975, and it's making it. And we were hoping to have a new one installed in spring, but we've been told it's most likely it will be next fall, like next August or September. So we have two summers to get through with something that's, we've been managing to keep going from 1975. So cross your fingers for us that we can make that happen. The cost there is going to be between $525,000 and $650,000 anticipated. We kind of don't mind if it goes over two fiscal years, because that will help us save funds to pay for that. The other big project we're looking at is that circulation audiovisual area renovation, which will help us be more efficient with our time and energy and create a better user experience for people. The initial investment in that, the initial estimates, was $1.2 million, which is right on target with what we're seeing with other library construction across the state, in our sister libraries, our peer libraries. And so we're looking at how we can decrease the costs and get the same kind of work. We're looking at phasing it and just looking what our different options might be. So the reason we've had some changes in the budget is this, this is breaking news, and we're still in initial design phase. The board, staff haven't seen design, just a number of the management team. So it's very much still happening. Knowing that these projects are going to be expensive, we're looking at additional fundraising grants to help support, support the facilities and IT projects. So we are spending into our fund balances with this budget. The board is aware of that. They're giving us great flexibility and freedom, so that we can have a budget that means we can pay for things, but we will not overspend. We need to keep about half of our fiscal year in our fund balance, because half of our money comes in September, and half of our money comes in June. And that means if we don't have half the year sitting in fund balance, we can't pay for January through June, because the money comes in June. So know that we will be fiscally responsible, and again, we are looking at the different options to make sure that we can spend out. And because we've had some openings in staff, we are hoping to have a slightly higher fund balance than what you'll see in the book that Munis calculated for us. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Anyone have questions for Celeste?
And the handout copy is what the library board approved, and by state statute, that is their job to approve the budget.
It's this right here, that I passed out to everybody. Mary Alice?
So thank you for, for letting us know that you're trying to save up for some big projects. And you said it was the 803 fund, right? That's where your savings account, so to speak, is?
Yes. And then the foundation, of course, has been setting money aside as well. So we are in conversation with them about how much they might be able to pay for as well.
So, just so that I can kind of understand both the handout and the book, can you give me the rough amount? It looks like it's $26,000 in 803? It seems pretty small, but maybe it's...
We don't have that much aside. So it's more like the, the handout shows there's about $54,000, $55,000 we're going to pull from it, and what we're going to propose to the board next week is like it, $77,000, that's all that's in the fund.
Okay. All right.
So yeah, it's not much, but it will pay for something. And if we don't budget it, we can't spend it.
Well, we're not talking 91 million, so yeah, there you go.
We are not.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else with any questions from Celeste, for Celeste? I think that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Celeste. Moving right along. Find my agenda. Oh, VCC. ECC, no. Staff report. Darius?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm here for it.
Mayor?
Real quick, staff report. I just want to announce that you may have heard already, but the city of Urbana was awarded, again, Gold Level Bicycle Friendly Community Award by the League of American Bicyclists. This is a four-year award, and that makes Urbana one of 36 Gold Level Communities out of over, out of over 500 bicycle-friendly communities in the United States. So that reflects a great deal of, the effort for the application was led by the Regional Planning Commission staff, with a great deal of help from Urbana Public Works, Communications, and Community Development. So I want to thank everybody who had a role in that in continuing to make us a bicycle-friendly community.
Okay, and, Darius? I guess that's you now, staff report?
Uh, no.
Oh, no. Wait a minute. Oh, resolution, okay. My bad. New business.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Darius White, Economic Development Coordinator in the Community Development Service Department. I'm here this evening to ask council to consider a resolution adopting the agreement for the planned use of five, or for 50,000 allocated to the African-American Heritage Trail led by Visit Champagne County Foundation. Just to let you all know, that agreement in front of you is stated towards Visit Champagne County Foundation. They have made the change to Experience Champagne-Urbana, but legally, the foundation hasn't changed its name. So just to let you all know, you see Visit Champagne County because of that. Just a quick history of the 50,000. The city council voted to allocate $2,500,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act for the standard allowance. That was then transferred to the general fund in spring 2022. The mayor proposed that 50,000 of the standard allowance be allocated to the African-American Heritage Trail. General information regarding the trail. The African-American Trail is a community-driven and volunteer-led initiative. It is celebrating the lives and contributions of African-Americans in the Champagne County area. The mission is to educate today's residents and visitors about the rich cultural history of the people whose stories have been largely unrecognized. But... but who directly shaped the place we call home. The vision is to inspire conversation, expand understanding, and contribute to a better society. An important goal of the trail is to provide an accessible experience for visitors and all community members. Within this agreement, I just want to highlight a few of the scope of services. The city will provide a representative for the African-American Heritage Trail Committee. I have been that representative since February of 2021. Visit Champagne County Foundation will establish sites within Urbana for signage and murals. Signage will consist of themes covering the following, but not limited to: Ellis Subdivision, Ellis Drive 6, Urbana Businesses, Shelton's Laundry, African-American Elected Officials, and African-American Veterans. Visit Champagne County Foundation will provide written reports quarterly to the city on the spending of funds for the trail in regards to all Urbana sites and marketing, and to all Urbana sites for murals and signage, as well as marketing and any update to the website that consists of the Urbana locations. Visit Champagne County Foundation will present to city council once all funds are spent to provide an overview of the African-American Heritage Trail Urbana sites and contributions. And then I just want to draw everyone's attention in the packet to the attachments. There are two attachments, the Dr. Ellis Subdivision, as well as the Ellis Drive 6 and School Integration. This information is not finalized for the signage yet, but it's a really good example of what you can expect for the signs that will go up for Urbana sites. As far as the trail itself now, there has been two unveilings of signs. That includes the Frederick Douglass sign that is downtown Champagne at One Main, as well as Bethel AME Church, which is located in front of the church, which is roughly off of Fourth Street on the north side of Champagne. And then tomorrow, there'll be the unveiling of the Student Demonstration for Equal Rights. And that will be on the University of Illinois, the southwest corner of Green and Wright Street. As of now, we do have plans to move forward with Urbana signage once this information is finalized. Once again, going back to the two attachments, these will be the first two signs that Urbana will move forward with.
Any questions for Darius? Chris?
Thanks for the presentation, Darius. The signs, is it like the signs at the courthouse in front of Hotel Royer by the library? There's one kind of in the middle of the Race Street where it's in front of UC Bank about Lincoln. Is it those quality of signs?
Yes. If you think of like the Lincoln sign in front of the old courthouse, similar to that, not as large as that sign itself, but very good quality, yes, sir.
Okay. How much does one of those signs cost? Do you have, do you know?
Average, you're looking at, what we kind of have worked with is looking at anywhere between 3,000 to 5,000, just depending on the actual site location. But then we also want to make sure some funds are allocated to updating the website and notifying of that actual signage being up. But yeah, between 3,000 to 5,000 per sign.
And how will the artists be selected to paint the murals? Or a mural?
I believe there will be a call for artists with that. That portion is being led by Forty North, who is assisting Visit Champagne County Foundation on the art portion.
Does Urbana Arts and Culture Commission get involved in any of this, or?
Currently, they're not involved. I do know that Kelly with Forty North has made this well-known that she will be taking public input and information regarding this. And she does have a priority to work with artists within the region, rather than the county, because we are limited on artists. And they do have the desire to have African-American artists do the murals as well.
Okay. And have sites been selected yet?
They are working on current sites now, identifying spaces. And then we will be having one-on-ones with the businesses for approval due to it being on private property. But as of now, they are creating the site list.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice.
So as I was reading through the agreement, the agreement specifies that the funds are going to be served as matching funds required to obtain a DCEO grant.
Yes. Visit Champagne County Foundation received a DCEO tourism grant, I believe, for 500,000. So this is also assisting to make sure they have the matching funds for that grant. Other organizations, the city of Champagne, they have already given their money upfront. We are, at this point, ready to give our funds, but we are doing it in helping, to help them with the matching funds.
Okay, I just didn't know what DCEO was.
Oh, yes. Department, oh, I should really know this. Department of Commerce Economic Office? No, I'm destroying that. Opportunity, thank you so much, sorry.
All right. I mean, I understand why we kind of have lists of sites and so forth, but at the end of the day, we're basically contributing $50,000 to the creation of this trail.
Yes. And that 50,000 will go directly towards Urbana sites.
Right, so we were going to cut a check for 50,000 and give it to them.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the information and the work that's gone into this. Definitely enjoyed reading a little bit on the website that's up already. And my question was about other cities, how they were contributing. And you addressed that a little bit about Champagne paying up front. And just a question to just reassure us in the public that there's an equitable cost sharing between the different cities that are involved in this project.
Yes. I'm not sure what other cities have provided other than Champagne. Champagne had a contribution of $100,000.
Thank you.
Jaya?
I am happy to make a recommendation.
Let me say one thing. Mary Alice, will you take the chair?
I will take the chair, and the chair recognizes Sharice.
One question. There were, I got some questions about whether or not the signage or the African-American Trail itself would be in conflict with the, some of the residents of Ellis Drive subdivision that want and have been trying for a few years to establish Ellis Subdivision as a historical preservation site. Is there any conflict with that?
To my knowledge, no, but I'm not too much aware of what's necessary for Ellis Subdivision to become a historical site. And I don't believe this will interfere, but I would be happy to look into that and provide more information.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want the chair back?
Yes, I do, thank you.
I will relinquish the chair back to.
Okay, Jaya?
I'd like to make a recommendation for approval of Resolution Number 2023-06-065R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement for Visit Champagne County Foundation African-American Heritage Trail with a recommendation for approval on the consent agenda.
Okay, you have a second.
I will second.
Any questions, discussions? Okay, will the clerk, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any names? Okay. Thank you, Darius.
Thank you all.
Next is ordinance number 2023-06-017, ordinance approving a special use permit for 1202 East Harding Drive, Plan Case 2469 SU23. And we have, who is this? Nick.
This is Nick Olson.
Hi, Nick.
Hi there. Sorry, I think they put me in previous presentations.
I'm sorry, Nick. Okay. Uh-oh.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. So this is a request for a special use permit to allow renovations to Steer Place Apartments at 1202 East Harding Drive owned by the Housing Authority of Champagne County. The zoning ordinance requires a special use permit for new construction and major renovation in the southeast Urbana overlay district. This overlay was established in 2017 with the intent of improving quality of life in the district by reviewing construction for conformance with guidelines related to safety, maintenance, and accessibility. Those guidelines are included as an exhibit in the Plan Commission staff report, which is included as an exhibit in the council staff report. You can see the location of Steer Place here between Colorado and Harding, just east of Cottage Grove. Steer Place was initially built in 1972 and contains 104 affordable units serving households age 55 and over. The overlay construction guidelines primarily concern site exteriors. So while a majority of the overall renovations that the Housing Authority is planning in this case are actually interior renovations, what we're really looking at for this review process is the site exterior. So accordingly, that's mostly what the staff report discusses. Council previously awarded this project some funding through ARPA, too, so you may be somewhat familiar with the proposal already. A description of all the relevant renovations and how the district guidelines apply is contained in the staff report. Complete site plans and a project scope are also included as attachments to the draft ordinance. Here I have some slides showing the exterior site plan, which includes things like repairs to walkways, fencing, placement of lighting throughout the site. I have a landscaping plan here as well, showing the location of existing and proposed trees on the site. In addition to those plans, I'll quickly run through some site photos and just talk about some of the specific work for the exterior that's being proposed. So some of the proposed exterior work includes repairing existing walkways where necessary, replacing and repairing handrails at building entrances where necessary, adding new landscaping to some areas of the site, including the east side of the building shown here, trimming existing landscaping where necessary. This is something that relates to district guidelines on sightlines and visibility in terms of security on locations, repairing existing fencing where necessary, repaving and adding some new seating to the outdoor recreation area, replacing lighting with a new LED system that adjusts lighting throughout the day. That's another thing that the district guidelines recommend. And replacing the existing security cameras at building entrances and common areas with a new high-definition system. So full staff findings are available in the staff report. But just to summarize, we find that because the proposed exterior work primarily consists of replacing and repairing existing site infrastructure, nothing that's being proposed would move the site further from conformance with district guidelines. And we also find that maintenance and upgrades to things like walkways, handrails, as well as the lighting and security system should generally improve safety and accessibility on the site. Plan Commission heard this case on May 18th and finding both the special use permit criteria and the overlay district guidelines to all be met, voted unanimously to forward this to Committee of the Whole with a recommendation of approval conditional on general conformance with the submitted project scope and site plans. Staff have prepared an ordinance in line with that recommendation and are recommending that it be placed on the consent agenda for the next city council meeting. And finally, I'll just note that we've received no public input on this case. I can take any questions for staff. We also have a couple representatives of the project here who can also answer questions directly.
Thank you, Sharice. The Housing Authority is the one handling the project in terms of putting out the bids, hiring the contractors to do the work, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we're just issuing a special use permit so they can do that?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Anyone else with any questions? Mary Alice.
I don't have a question. I just kind of wanted to provide a little bit of context to city council members, because I was on the council when this was approved to do this special overlay district. It was determined by the SUNA residents and city staff and so forth about the concerns on some of that area that this would be best used to mitigate some of the concerns about safety and access and so forth. So I kind of wanted to give that background to everybody. That was the whole purpose of that special overlay. And it seems to me like this project is, should be held as an example of what we want people to be doing in order to help with safety and accessibility. So that's it.
Grace?
Thank you. And on that, if we could just clarify to you that this is only, requires a special use permit because of the overlay district. Otherwise, it would not, a renovation would not require a special use permit in any other district.
Typically, no, and it's only renovations where the total construction costs are more than 50% of the building's estimated market value.
Thank you.
James?
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other questions.
I'm ready to welcome one.
I would move ordinance number 2023-06-017, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 1201 East Harding Drive, Plan Case 2469-SU23, to council for approval on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by James and seconded by Jaya? Any discussion? James?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your work on this. I'm looking forward to this project moving forward. I have spent a lot of time with the mayor at Steer Place, and know it's in dire need of the internal parts of this renovation and really support this.
Grace?
Thank you. I'm also in support of this, support of the Steer Place renovations that we already approved with ARPA. This seems like another formality there. I see that Steer Place is in need. I have a friend who moved in there past year or two. I am going to take a moment to speak about some of the Urbana overlay district, which I appreciate a little background. And I definitely would like to learn more as we move on, not tonight, but in the future. I did go back and read that initial proposal resolution. From my reading that and needing to learn more, it seems very classist and not in my backyard in nature to me. I'm trying to understand why the idea would be to require a special use permit for multifamily dwellings instead of addressing any of the other recommendations in that study, which were about maintenance and site design. This is what I'm speaking of when I'm talking about the root causes of crime and talking about poverty, maybe lack of education or job opportunities. I'm trying to understand where the idea came that apartment buildings were the issue, not any of these other social factors. And it looks like to me that a lot of those things haven't been addressed. Again, I'd love to learn more and love to be wrong on that. When I drive past it on a regular basis by this area, I don't see that site designs that have changed. I don't see that maintenance. I would love to see that and willing to put in some effort to do that. I've had some initial talks with Solot Grazia leadership about maybe being interested in them helping to support some community garden spaces, a few raised beds, some fruit trees, some of those things that enhance a community and bring some social connection and what I see as addressing more of the root causes of crime rather than imposing special use permises, or permits, on apartment buildings themselves. So I also take issue with what I see as some discrepancy between all of this with SUNA and requiring the special use permits in this overlay district versus how I've seen the process go when the Learman Community Action Group was talking about that garden site and not wanting to have housing, multifamily housing units on that site. And I did not see the same response as creating a whole overlay district to deal with that. Also, compared to how we've talked about crisis pregnancy centers and saying that we can't restrict them through special zoning, and it seems like this is exactly what it's doing. So I know this is not for tonight. This is a whole other can of worms. But having learned about this, and I'd like to learn more, I take issues with quite a few things about this overlay district.
Mary Alice?
Well, seeing as I was the one who kind of brought up a little bit of the background, Grace, I'd strongly recommend that there's a long history in this neighborhood and many things that the city had attempted to do. So I'm sure that there's lots of resources to bring you up to speed on that. It's impossible to go through it tonight, but, and I don't know the entire story, but there is probably over 10 years that led to this point. So before you jump to a decision, I guess I would say gather some information to hear why those decisions were made. There have been a lot of different things that the city attempted to do throughout those years.
Anyone else? Yes, mayor?
I'll provide additional information because I've been very involved in that area since 2009. But I will say that the recommendations of the overlay district that you're looking at were a reflection and a result of several studies that have been. of several studies that have been done that show that certain environmental changes, especially in the exterior of a building, can actually contribute and promote safety. And that's what the concern of the neighborhood residents was. And it's not just Steer Place. It's, it's the Silverwater, Colorado Fletcher area. So there's documented research showing that many types of environmental exterioral design can enhance and promote safety. And that was the motivation for this overlay district, not a classist attitude or the other things that you mentioned. And that's part of the context for this district.
Okey-dokey. Do I have a motion? Oh, we have a motion on the table, right? Okay, any more discussion? All right, would you please call the role clerk?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes for the consent agenda for next week. Next, thank you, Nick. Next, we have a Resolution Number 2023-06-066R, Resolution for Improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study from Florida to Green. And this is Public Works Hello, John.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thank you for making space for me on the agenda. It was a tight evening tonight. I think this will be a quick succession of five items here. As you know, we have this song and dance we need to do when we use state motor fuel tax funds where we approve a budget on our end and then we need to appropriate funds with the state on the other end as well. So this is the second half, the second side of that coin, as it might be, where I have five projects here. We're planning to get, working on early fiscal year 2024. So they are projects that are in the draft CIP, which we presented to you. And we'll be coming back in a couple of weeks for, to present a resolution to adopt it as we are taking comments now, of course, and we'll make edits to that. But so as a quick overview, I kind of pulled up the council packet. I'm going to open this map. We're going to see if it's going to work tonight. It's kind of late. ArcGIS might have gone to sleep already. Just to give you a quick visual overview of these five locations and then touch on some of the details of what the numbers mean. Okay, so we've got our map pulled up here. All right, and so five projects we'll touch on in order are the Lincoln Avenue Project from Florida to Green. We're going to talk about the corridor study that is, has already started and that we will start spending money on in fiscal year 24. We have the Lincoln Avenue Washington Kalani Project, talking about the engineering work that we plan to start this fiscal year. See, zooming down to, back to Florida Avenue. So Florida Avenue, the large project from Wright to Vine, Wright to Hillcrest, technically. Again, similar to the North Lincoln, starting engineering in fiscal year 24. An offshoot of that project, of course, is the, am I going to miss make it? Yeah, the Florida Avenue Shared Use Path. Happened as a separate project because of the ITEP funding we're able to achieve or attain. And related to that then is the Bakers Lane Shared Use Path, another ITEP project there over on the east side of town. So then, step back into the memo here. Page up. So getting into a little bit of the details about the Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study from Florida to Green. Looking for opportunities in this corridor for safety improvements and mobility for multi modes of transportation. We have a particular intersection, Lincoln Avenue and Ohio Street, that is a top 5% priority safety location in this District Five of IDOT. So we're going to do a full corridor study, very similar to what was done with Florida Avenue Project. As you know, we finished that corridor study last year. Same, same game plan. The Regional Planning Commission, RPC, will lead the corridor study. And the city will support RPC with an engineering consultant with some services. RPC doesn't have that engineering capabilities on staff right now. So RPC has already started doing this work in early 2024. And we plan to, and they plan to finish, if I just said 24, early 2023 this year, plan to finish the study by August 2024. So RPC's costs are funded by the statewide planning grant. No cost to us. We have a budget for $200,000 for engineering consulting fees as that supporting role. And for this MFT resolution, our proposal is to have a 10% contingency on that for a total of $220,000 that we would appropriate from the state. I guess would, would you like me to continue? Go through all five or just do one at a time?
I guess we could go through all five and then maybe omnibus it. So sure, go through all five if you don't mind.
Don't mind at all. Yeah, please feel free to stop me at any time. Okay, so then stepping into the North Lincoln Avenue Project. This is the one that we are applying for, oh, not yet. So I'm sorry. Okay, so this is the one we're applying for a Safe Streets for All Grant, working with our partners in COATs. We're going to take a second crack at it this year. This is the, the idea we're looking at ways to improve safety in this corridor, especially for pedestrians, but also for motor vehicles, by considering a road diet, reducing the cross section from four lanes to three lanes and some additional bicycle accommodations along with that and pedestrian accommodations. So as we're pursuing this grant, we're going to go ahead and get started with the engineering, planning and design work in fiscal year 24. The estimated cost for the services would be $1.626 million. The, we did receive Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds, federal funds through COATs for this project. And so the Surface Transportation Funds will reimburse the city for up to 80% of the engineering fee with the city covering the remaining 20%. But because this is a reimbursement from, of the federal funding, we still need a state motor fuel tax resolution to cover the full cost so that we have some, something to pay with. So this proposed resolution includes a 10% contingency on that estimate, that budget for a total of $1.8 million. All right, then for?
John, I have one question about that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the same project we, we were talking about once earlier? And you were thinking about putting a bus lane? Taking it from four to three, but adding a bus lane or something?
Similar, yeah. It's, there would be bus, like bump outs essentially. It's similar to, I think the concept that's on Green Street in front of the Illinois Union, kind of a, almost like a parking lane for the buses to, for you're off into so they can get out of that main traffic lane.
Okay.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be like the full length of the project. It would just be at the bus, it'd just add, add like a bus stop.
And then it'll be a middle lane where people turn left?
Yeah, yeah. What is affectionately known as a suicide turn lane. Two-way left turn lane. Yeah.
Oh, no. Okay.
Right. Yeah, with the idea there being that a lot of the problems in this, this corridor are rear end collisions of vehicles. The, having one lane of through traffic can minimize some of those conflicts of changing lanes, of people waiting because somebody's making a left-hand turn. You know, moving those left movements to the middle lane also provides an easier, shorter path for pedestrians to cross.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the, this one? Grace?
Thank you, Sharice. Your questions were jogging my memory about, was this the one that we saw a few different options of designs? As far as lanes and where the pedestrian or bike paths were? And so did that get decided?
No, and that's why this one has a higher engineering price tag because we want to make sure that we figure out those options through the planning phase where we want to make sure we have the alternatives considered, economics of it, get a chance to get public input. You know, contrast to the Florida Avenue Project and that Southern Lincoln Avenue Project, those have these like corridor study components led by RPC. This project will not have that necessarily. So we want to make sure we still get some good public input on this larger project.
Okay, so the final design is not yet decided, right?
To the point, yes.
Thank you.
Chris?
Just in general, John, about these mid-block pedestrian crosswalks. We talked about this earlier with Bill Brown and that is that there doesn't seem to be proper signage or striping on the street to let drivers know what they're supposed to do and what pedestrians are supposed to do in that moment of being in the middle of the street and I'm trying to get across the entire street and they're coming and when, when do they stop? Because there's no official traffic light, no official stop sign. So, you know, and I guess I'm comparing it to the Springfield Avenue going through the Granger Library and Beckman that, you know, that's clearly delineated to where everybody knows what they're supposed to be doing. I guess what I'm saying in general is can we include that in, in these plans?
Yeah, yeah, that's, well, that's a good thing to consider. And yeah, what you bring up of the, like the rapid flashing, you know, signs there on Springfield, it's kind of that higher, a higher level of pedestrian crossing. And the current kind of regional guidelines that we, we have there, will take a pedestrian crosswalk through different stages of, of intensity, I guess, of, of the, the traffic control. And with the, the farthest being that this pedestrian crossing gets its own traffic signal, like it is, it's not a street intersection. It's, it's a pedestrian crossing has its own stop sign or stoplight, apparently, or essentially. So in that, that all gets dictated by the volume pedestrian traffic, volume of traffic on the streets, the number of lanes the pedestrians have to cross. So the number of like potential conflict points they have. I mean, in short, yes, that's an important thing. We need to make sure it's right sized and that it's going to be understood by the pedestrians and the motorists what they should be doing. And I know that Bill Brown and BPAC has come with some good, some good considerations for some of these crossings where we have, say, crossing four lanes of traffic. That's where, you know, that could warrant some additional striping, some additional signage, so, yep.
Anyone else? Mary Alice?
So I'm trying to wrap my head around the amount of money. So we have $1.8 million. And all, this is going to try out different scenarios, gather input on those different scenarios and then draw out the final scenario. Is that a good summarization of it?
Yes.
And that's $1.8 million?
Mm-hmm.
And I assume we're sending it out for an RFP for an engineering service?
That's correct, yes. For this North Lincoln Avenue Project and for the Florida Avenue Project, because we're using federal funds for the engineering and we're pursuing federal funds for construction for both those reasons, we're going to go through a federally compliant QBS process, qualification-based selection process. So it'll be a little more rigorous than what we do for most of our engineering services.
I mean, the other one was about 200,000, right? With the 10%, it was 200. I mean, those are huge differences in numbers there for a very similar, similar size of, of real estate, basically, right? The length.
Right, but what the 1.8 million, you know, appropriated funds is doing is bringing you from through concept to permitting, developing the basic plan, creating construction documents. The $200,000 for the South Lincoln Avenue, that's just the corridor study. What you guys saw with Florida Avenue that was completed at the end of December 2022?
So no designs, more conceptual?
Correct, correct. It's, it's, yeah, at that level.
No schematics, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, you bet.
Okay, I'd entertain a...
I'm sorry, Sharice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep going.
I have a few more.
I'm sorry, I'm just, yeah, I'm just really sorry. I'm tired and hungry.
I appreciate that. So let's see, let's go to, this one's going to be similar at the top, similar kind of scope that we're talking about for this Florida Avenue, the roadway project from Wright to Hillcrest. So again, this, we're going to be separating out the shared use path because it has that ITEP funding. But similar kind of scenario is the North Lincoln Project. We are pursuing federal grant funds right now. We have a RACE grant out that we're waiting for the results from. But in the meantime, we're going to go ahead and get engineering going. We have a slightly smaller scale for the cost of this one, driven by the completion of the corridor study. So we have this nice head start that the corridor study gave us. So we have a budget for planning and design of $859,300. Similar story, we have federal Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds. We're also going to use the remainder of our COVID relief funds on this project. So with those acting together leaves us with a remainder of only about $124,000 that we would have to spend on this engineering work. Same story, we'll get reimbursed by these other funding sources. We're going to appropriate enough MFT money for the total amount, put on a 10% contingency, get $950,000. So similar story for, as with the previous one there.
Any questions regarding this particular design? Grace?
So it looks like this one, the Phase Two Design, is 859,000 something? Sorry? And is that the engineering designs? Like what we were talking about with the previous project?
Yeah, yeah, it's, and the terms that I'm using are kind of common for like these DOT projects where we have, they call it Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. Phase One and Two are generally engineering phases. You start at Phase One is the planning where you get to the end of that and you've gotten the environmental, cultural permits. You've defined the project. You've kind of done your feasibility studies. And then Phase Two Design is creating construction documents that you can go to bid with. And so this is planning and design for that 859,300.
And I'm still trying to bring back to some Mary Alice's questions of the discrepancy with 1.8 million in the other project. And the other ones seem like not as low of a cost for the same kinds of things. I'm just trying to understand what, how that's working.
So your question is why is this one different from the Lincoln Avenue one?
Yes, but it seems like this is also planning and design, but for a million dollars less.
Yeah, and so part of that is driven by this project, we have a head start on the planning because of the corridor study that was done. And then we didn't have that benefit on the North Lincoln Project. And we, because we anticipate, we want to work through different alternatives for that project. We want to make sure we have the budget to do so. I'd love it if we don't spend all that money, of course. And that's part of applying for these grants is you don't want to shoot too low because then you are capped at the amount you asked for. Because they'll pay for 80% of what you asked for. So if you come in under, you're golden. Go over, then you've got to pay whatever goes over.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mary Alice?
So you just reminded me, I remember when Tim came on staff, and he was, we kept getting these resolutions for the state motor fuel tax, and he said, oh, well, people didn't close them out, right? So right now, we're saying, well, okay, well, we don't know what the final bill is, we're just giving our best guess, but at the end of the day, we have to reconcile both documents, and you have to, right, you have to close it out.
Yeah.
It just, it would be nice to know, because right now, this is going to take years. I don't know if you or I will be here when this is finally done. And so, so maybe whoever needs to do this work won't be seeing this, but it would be nice for us to know, at the end of the day, this is how much we thought it was going to cost, this is how much it did cost us.
For sure, for sure.
I just wanted to remind people that that does, that matching of the original and then closing out, they do have to come together so that we know the total cost at the end of the day.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, to piggyback Mary Alice's points there, John, you were here, I don't know, three weeks, a month ago. And you and Tim gave out this figure of 45% inflation costs. Like everything that we see in these estimated costs could be bumped up by 45% to in some sort of nebulous inflation. I mean, is that, are these numbers subject to that 45%?
I would say that we are trying to, we have tried to capture those costs, those inflation costs, so I'm not, my, I, my hope is that it is not needing to increase by 45% yet.
Don't hear this as your fault.
Oh, I mean, we're all on this wild ride together, right? But yeah, that's, our intention is for this to be as, you know, relatively current with the data we have, yeah. Which is another challenge with when you applied for those grant funds. Yeah.
Question, is any of this have to do with the supply chain shipping crap that they're talking, that they actually fabricate?
Yes, yes, it's definitely a child of that, it's labor. Labor costs were also, it was, because it wasn't equal labor and material increases, but it was both of them contributing, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that. Anyone else have a question? Okay, moving on to...
Two more.
Two more? Two more? Okay.
All right, almost there. We've got the, now here we are at the two ITEP projects, we got the Florida Avenue Shared Use Path from Lincoln to Race, was conceptualized with that larger project originally. We have an ITEP grant coming, so we are going to go ahead and appropriate funds for the full amount of this project as we will start the planning, the Phase One Planning, Phase Two Design, pretty much as soon as we get in funding agreement with the state for this grant, and move forward to construction soon after that's done. The, so the estimated cost for this project, including engineering and construction, is about 1.098 million dollars. So similar, similar concept here, we've got the state ITEP money, the Rebuild Illinois Funds, those are going to cover the entire cost of the project up to the budget that's in the grant application. But we are going to appropriate the full amount, so we can spend money and then get reimbursed. So with a 10% contingency, it comes to a total of 1.2 million dollars for the Florida Avenue Shared Use Path.
Chris?
Remind me, John, what shared use means, are we sharing with pedestrians and bikes, is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Multi-use path, bike path, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else with questions? Grace?
Is that design solidified after the study, or are there still some design questions remaining for this Shared Use Path project?
I would say the alignment is pretty set, and really just, the biggest thing is just people, because any shared use path needs to be ADA accessible, so we got to work out the details to make sure that's all, all the slopes and stuff are working out fine, but yeah, it's essentially going to be where it is, and we're going to, because we have certain components of the larger roadway project that we're going to dance around and complement.
Okay, yeah, I think that's what we're talking about, like roundabouts or no roundabouts, but this is just the Shared Use Path, and that's pretty set in the design. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okey dokey.
One last one.
One last one?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so we got Baker's Lane, that's another ITEP project, we got the Shared Use Path. This is the one that goes from the future home of the Health and Wellness Center along Washington Street East over to Smith Road, heads north along the east side of Weaver Park to get to Main Street. So, similar to the Florida Avenue Shared Use Path, we're going to start Phase One Planning, Phase Two Design as soon as we get the green light from IDOT. Budget for engineering and construction for this project is 1.466 million dollars. So with a 10% contingency, the proposed resolution would appropriate 1.6 million dollars for this project.
Any questions? Okay. Now can I entertain a motion? I know, but I can't do it.
I can do an omnibus. Yeah, let's do that. All right. I move that we put together into an omnibus bill the following resolutions. Resolution number 2023-06-066R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the State Motor Fuel Tax for Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study from Florida to Green. And Resolution number 2023-06-067R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for Lincoln Avenue Complete Streets Project from Washer to Killarney. And Resolution number 2023-06-0668R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for the State Motor Fuel Tax for Florida Avenue Improvement Project from Wright to Hillcrest. And Resolution number 2023-06-069R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax from Florida Avenue Shared Use Path from Lincoln to Race. And finally, Resolution number 2023-06-070R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for Baker's Lane Shared Use Path.
I guess second.
Second.
Okay. This move by Mary Alice, and seconded by James for omnibus for Resolutions Number Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. Any discussion? All right. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, moving on.
So now I think I need to move the omnibus to City Council, is that okay?
Right, for approval.
All right, so based on those resolutions that I read in the previous omnibus, I move that this is put on City Council's consent agenda. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice to move the omnibus to a consent agenda, and seconded by Jaya, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And is that it? Next we have Council Input and Communications. Chris?
I apologize to Council for being a little repetitive, but again, in case you missed it earlier, we are going to have a budget exercise at Thursday, June 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at 25 o'clock Brewery, 208 West Grig Street. It's kind of on the west side of the Boneyard Crossing. And this will be an exercise to prioritize the city of Urbana's spending, so come on out.
Anyone else have some announcements or input that they want to make? Mary Alice, can I, can you take it for a second?
Sure, I will take the chair, and the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay, a couple of things that I just want to say, I am, I was so happy and proud of this City Council for the unanimous approval of our new police chief. And I don't get, you know, I was just happy that it went as nicely as it did. And thank, I would like to thank everyone that, for all the information, staff, council, everybody, what you did was just having the town halls, everything, just really, I think, made us look better as a city, made us look more cohesive, more, all those things that we say we are, I think came through because of how we handled it as a community here in this city building. And I really, really was excited about getting this new chief. The other thing I wanted to say, I got a very strange email today from someone who's not in my ward, but apparently, and I just want everyone to keep, you know, everyone on council to keep, think about this, there is some, some, some kind of issues with the VO ride. And not just the fact that they end up in the middle of your driveway, when trying to back out, or in the middle of the street, because folks just drop them off. But the issue seemed to be here is the cost. And that, this gentleman had an issue with stopping the ride. So a $4 ride ended up costing him $40. And I know we have some kind of, not agreement, but don't we have some kind of, you know, little thing that goes on with VO ride people, and they've made it their policy now that they don't...
The number you dialed is temporarily unavailable.
Okey dokey. Thank you very much. They have some kind of issue now with their policy where they don't, they don't check, if you have a complaint and it's about money, they don't even, they don't even bother, and they don't do any retro, they don't want to pay you back. And that's an issue that, you know, people pay their money, they do this kind of thing, and you just, you cannot, it makes it, it makes it difficult for, for it's the person, the consumer, to get through or to trust that company, and they're linking it to us. And that's a corporate issue and not a city issue, but I really think that we need to say something or something.
All right, I, instead of recognizing the mayor, I'm going to get it back to you, Sharice.
Okay, thank you, and I will recognize the mayor.
Thanks, I think I got the same email you did, I reached out, I forwarded to staff, and they're in regular contact with VO rides, so they were going to, there is a recent change in policy, but they were going to see if they could get more information.
Okay.
There's always more to the story than...
I know, there's, even a pancake has two sides, I understand, but, you know, it was just this issue that, that it just kind of bothered me because I see these things all over the city, including, like I said, in the middle of my driveway. So if, you know, this, this is something that definitely needs to be taken care of. And anyone else with any comment or input? Okay, with no more business, I adjourn this meeting.